Right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is that time of the hour in which we'd like to get started, so please take a seat. We'd like to call the regular city council meeting to order at 6:04 PM on Wednesday, February the fourteenth. I'd like to request the city clerk to read the metro replay schedule.
And just before proceeding, Mayor, just to confirm on the closed session from the special meeting, that special meeting is adjourned at this time?
Oh, thank you. A special meeting of the city council is adjourned, there's nothing to report out.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move on to the opening for the regular meeting, and that'll take us into the opening statement. So, this meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel fourteen on Friday, February sixteenth, at 1:00 PM, and Wednesday, February twenty-first, at 9:00 AM. It is being closed captioned and will be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete one of the blue speaker cards, which can be found at the back of the room, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Wynton?
Here.
Councilmember Detrick?
Here.
Councilmember Hume?
Here.
Vice Mayor Suen?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here.
And next item.
Take us to item 1.2, the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, I see Vanessa. Vanessa, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, the Constitution of the United States, and to the Constitution of the people. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, to the Constitution of the people, and to the Constitution of the citizens. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, to the Constitution of the people, and to the Constitution of the citizens.
Right, at the beginning of every regularly scheduled city council meeting, the city council always has a moment of silence, so if you would join us in a moment of silence, please. All right, thank you very much. And I have an agenda in front of me. I'm open for a motion.
I will move that items nine-one and nine-two be continued to a date uncertain, and then move the rest of the agenda as-is.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close abstention. Next item.
For section three, the closed session, we have no closed session items, nor do we have any presentations or announcements under section four, which will take us to section five, our public comment. And, let me see.
We don't, I...
We do have two speakers, so let me see if I can grab those slips. They just aren't in the system yet.
All right.
And if I could ask Janet Frick to come down to the speaker podium. If I said you're damn wrong, sorry about that.
Uh, Frick.
Janet Fricky, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day. I've been a resident in Elk Grove for now, I'm twenty-eight years. Unbelievable. Kudos, I've seen a lot of fabulous things happening in the time that I've been here. There's the elephant in the room, that's not quite the elephant, because you, each of you are addressing the homeless community. As we know, it's growing. Some wonderful things, I'm here to speak one other time about, for funding, supporting, funding a couple more houses for the homeless. The shelter is doing great, but as we know, it will be closing. I would like to respectfully request for you all to consider, there's no way that we can build houses or purchase houses as quickly as the need to shelter. Getting some property to have a little triage where, like, on the way over here, and I spoke with someone, there was a young man, he looked like he was nineteen, maybe twenty, who was actively psychotic, who was having a difficult time figuring out how to get a sleeping bag on. He had sandals, not shoes. There are some people who are homeless who are savvy. Some want to be homeless, some don't, but the young men who I saw on the way over here was just a crescendo of, there's a lot of need. When the shelter closes, there's fifteen or twenty people that have someplace to go. Now, they won't. And my time is running up, there might be, what I think would be fabulous, one of the empty schools. There, I think, believe there's an empty school that's kind of rural, that has kitchen, bathrooms, shower, easy to put up some pods. That could be a great place, like, for this young man, for him to, somewhere to go tonight. He didn't have the wherewithal to figure out how to get to where the buses are to take him to a shelter. Anyway, there's a lot that needs to be done. I want to applaud each of you for what you're doing, and please think about even a plot of land where they can go and leave their sleeping bag and backpacks, so they can wander off or do whatever during the day and not have their items stolen. You guys are doing a great job, but we need more, as you know, in planning ahead and just throwing out a couple of ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, Lynn Wheat. Following Lynn is Mark Graham.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'd like to read what I read at the LAFCO hearing, because I would like the council members that were not present that evening to hear my words, and hopefully I can read them a little bit more clearly than I did that night. My concern with the FEIR is that the city of Elk Grove has submitted a flawed municipal service review. The city, by its own admission and a recent questionnaire sent to residents, needs additional revenue to provide, quote, "essential services" and to maintain its infrastructure. This after having been a city for eighteen years. Clearly, the financial model of the city is not working. A couple years back, the former Director of Public Works stated to the city council that the city was not allocating sufficient funds for roadway maintenance and needed an additional eight million dollars annually just to maintain what we had. Thanks to the increased gas tax, that deficit is still running about four-point-five million a year, according to the latest budget report. During this time, the city council substantially lowered development impact fees and placed more reliance on mellow roof fees for new homes being built, which despite being raised to the maximum amount each year, are still unable to maintain its infrastructure. An article two days ago in Comstock Magazine featured the financial issues with the city of Roseville, which is forcing cutbacks in service because its overreliance on sales tax, which accounts for forty percent of the city's revenue, while Elk Grove is in the same position. Elk Grove's job, housing imbalance, and lack of new employment is the cause of Elk Grove's financial woes, and the city is now pushing for a sales tax increase. That does nothing to wean the city off sales tax, but makes its dependency even worse. The city touted SEPA as the twenty-year master plan that would serve as an employment center, but the first project out of the box was another major housing subdivision. The zoning in SEPA is called hybrid zoning, which basically allows anything. Until the city can demonstrate financial responsibility and limit residential sprawl, I don't believe the city should expand its sphere. They are struggling to maintain what they already have, and SEPA has sufficient land for twenty years to demonstrate this. Just today, in the Sacramento Business Journal, I want to read something to you. After the Elk Grove City Council adopts a plan update, developers and city officials will begin a workshop process, including public input, to flesh out how that land would be developed. Well, it's interesting to me, but the working industry group that meets with staff have been planning on the general plan update, have had meetings and updates on that that the public has not had. So, I would really like our city to become more transparent and tell us that the developers, staff, landowners, and you have been planning what our city is going to look at, and that the public gets just to have a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Mark, and then Vanessa, following Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Mark Graham, and I live in Elk Grove. On January twenty-fifth, New Singular Wireless, which is basically DBA AT&amp;T, filed a planning application and agreement requesting that the city modify the municipal code title twenty-three, chapter ninety-four, and this is to specifically define, address, and ease the installation of cell antennas in the public right-of-way. Please do not do this. Elk Grove was one of the three hundred and twenty-five cities last year that opposed a bill in the legislature that would have done this by state power. It was called SB six forty-nine. The legislature passed that bill, and on October fifteenth of last year, Governor Brown vetoed it and saved everybody in the state from a huge fiasco. Now, I sent you an email, you may have seen it. What happened in the city of Santa Rosa was, now, AT&amp;T can come to the city and ask you to amend the municipal code, or they could just file an application for a permit and work with the municipal code as it is. But anyway, in Santa Rosa, I don't know, I think they had a master lease agreement, and they said, oh, we would love to put up some cell antennas and, you know, you'll have better coverage. And the photographs that I showed you show what happened. It ended up being, this was apparently not what they showed to the staff, and were not what the staff showed to the council, but the council in Santa Rosa approved it, and these things are enormous. I mean, the picture's kind of hard to see, but there's a woman standing out in front of her house on the sidewalk. She's looking up at a utility pole there, and there are at least five different pieces of equipment on the utility pole, put up there by Verizon, and right next to the sidewalk is a big electrical supply cabinet. That's almost as tall as she is. And the other picture, somebody spray-painted, stop this, on another one of those things. Now, I'm not going to get to spray painting. We should not amend the municipal code so that AT&amp;T can make more money. That company took in one-hundred-and-sixty-three billion dollars last year. We just pledged allegiance to the flag on the United States of America. AT&amp;T has no allegiance to any country, to any city, or to any person in the city. They are in it to make a buck, and that's what a corporation is supposed to do. The problem with these things, besides the fact that they're ugly and they'll reduce the value of your house, is that they transmit hazardous electromagnetic fields in all directions twenty-four hours a day. And according to thousands of scientific studies from around the world, long-term exposure to these magnetic fields causes a wide range of health impacts, from headaches to brain cancer. Some people can feel electromagnetic fields as pressure or tension in the chest. These people are called electro-sensitive. I'm electro-sensitive, and I know it. Once these things are put up, especially if they, if you amend the municipal code to facilitate it, neither you, me, or the entire neighborhood or the city will have any say-so to prevent it. And they'll be able to put these things on light poles right in front of people's homes, and it won't even go to the council. So, the question I ask you, Mr. Mayor and council, is who owns this city? If you amend the municipal code like AT&amp;T asked for, they will. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Vanessa, and that is the last speaker.
Happy Valentine's Day, council. Happy Ash Wednesday, too. We are really lucky, as a city, to have a representative on the LAFCO council. There are many incorporated parts, unincorporated parts of Sacramento County that don't get that benefit, and they just have to accept kind of the things that come to them. And that's why I was particularly disheartened by your decision, Mr. Hume, to vote yes in favor of expanding our sphere of influence here in Elk Grove. I really feel strongly, and I think that data supports it, that we should be building up and not out. It's an environmental impact that we just can't afford to continue urban sprawl. It displaces our indigenous plants and our animals, and it also doesn't help problems like affordable housing and homelessness. The rents are rising here dramatically in Elk Grove. I've shared with you guys my situation before. People are becoming homeless at an unprecedented rate. In my school, I go to CRC and ARC, there are thirty-three percent of students that are housing insecure. The problem is increasing, it's not decreasing, and addressing it by allowing developers to build outwards isn't going to solve the problem. We should be building up, because that's where affordable housing can make the most impact. So, I'm really discouraged about that decision, and I really hope that when we go forward moving with developers, we're going to consider the impact, not just to the city, which is no longer a small city. It's nice that a lot of people enjoy their quaint one-acre lots, and, you know, we have that space, and that's lovely, but this is also a city that's expanding rapidly. We're actively trying to get new employment opportunities, actively trying to attract more businesses, and that is to sustain the current population, but also because we know the projections of the population are going to expand. So, to that end, we know that we need to be building more, and again, up, not out. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing that there are no additional speakers, we can move to the next item.
Take us on to section six, general administration information.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'd like to first give Chief Noblet the floor to talk about his community advisory board.
Thank you, Mrs. Gill. Mayor and council, and members of the public, it's my pleasure to announce to you that we are ready to begin forming the Chief's Community Advisory Board. We've talked about that recently at council meetings and in other forums, and I'm very excited to launch this board. Just in the way of just a thumbnail sketch of what the board will do is, my hope is to work collaboratively with interested members of the community on matters involving community policing strategies, initiatives, police-community relations, frankly, a lot of the issues that have become very topical in our community of late. So, I'm anxious to get this started. We will have a description of the board online by close of business tomorrow, along with an electronic application form for interested folks to fill out and submit. At the end of the, a couple of weeks' time, we'll look at the applications to see, you know, that we have an adequate number, and we'll be looking to just find a diverse cross-section of the community to sit on this board, ideally with, you know, folks from different areas of the community, representing different professional walks of life, to, you know, to make this a real composite of the community. So, I expect that by, again, by close of business tomorrow, we should have that all on our website.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Chief. Secondly, I'd like to share with you a couple of awards that our Public Affairs Division brought home. We brought home two first-place awards recently from the Californian Divided Festival and Events Association Annual Conference. Honors were awarded for Party on the Palms Team Festival Promotional Poster and for an event photograph for the multicultural festival, and we got wonderful plaques to document it. These awards are on display in council chambers tonight, and we really want to congratulate our city staff for these awards. Also, I'm really proud to say that the city's Housing and Public Services Manager, Sarah Bontrager, has been elected to serve as the Vice Chair of the Continuum of Care Advisory Board. This advisory board is an independent body of local stakeholders committed to ending homelessness in Sacramento County. The board sets priorities for more than twenty million dollars in annual funding for homeless projects and makes policy recommendations to the Sacramento Steps Forward Board of Directors. The executive committee position offers a chance to shape homeless policy in the region and ensures that the needs of suburban communities like Elk Grove are included in discussion. Please join me in congratulating Sarah on being selected for this leadership position. Over the past several months, city staff and community members have been engaging in the City of Elk Grove Needs and Listening Project through one-on-one and group conversations, as well as an online survey. Over the next few council meetings, you will hear updates on our community feedback and summaries of what we are hearing. These results will include feedback from a recent public opinion poll. To add your voice to the continued community conversation regarding City of Elk Grove needs and priorities, we invite you to visit our website. Also, applications are now being accepted for the Mayor's Volunteer Awards. This program is designed to recognize volunteers who have made a significant impact on the quality of life in Elk Grove. Any individual, group, business, agency, or organization whose volunteer activities directly benefit the Elk Grove community is eligible. Nomination forms are available on our website or at City Hall, and the deadline for nominations is Friday, March the ninth. The Police Department will be posting its 2017 annual report on its website, ElkGrovePD.org, on Thursday, February fifteenth. The report will provide an overview of Police Department initiatives, accomplishments, and useful statistics from the previous calendar year. Also, the Police Department will host another Coffee with the Cop event on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, from seven to nine AM at the McDonald's on Sheldon Road. The public is encouraged to come out and connect with officers and ask their questions about the department and public safety. Details are also included on the department's Facebook page. Just as a reminder that for nonprofits, the online application period for fiscal year 2018-19 grant funding for nonprofit organizations is nearly over. Community service grant applications are due on February twenty-sixth. Event sponsorship grant applications are due on March the fourth. Guidelines, instructions, and applications are available at our website. Also, as a reminder that in accordance with City Hall Day, City Hall will be closed on Monday, February nineteenth, in observance of President's Day. Moving to the standing citywide initiatives update with the general plan update, the next meeting on the Triangle area has been scheduled for February twenty-sixth at six o'clock here in council chambers. With regard to the Civic Center site, the Community Center project was advertised for bid on January third, with the bid opening on February sixth. The project award to Bobo Construction is on tonight's agenda for eighteen-point-one million dollars, which is within the existing budget for the project. Assuming approval of tonight's agenda item, construction should start this spring, and completion is anticipated for spring of 2019. With regard to the Civic Center public art, Gordon Huether Studios has indicated that they are willing to deliver the iconic artwork as originally proposed, and we are currently working to finalize the contract. With regard to the Trails in Nature area, the city has initiated the schematic design process for the development of the southern portion of the Civic Center site. The site will be mostly passive park space and include habitat restoration of wetlands, native grasslands, and preservation and expansion of the native oak forest. An informational meeting with the neighborhood was held on January twenty-third, and a community meeting was held on February sixth to review preliminary conceptual plans and amenity options. A meeting with the Trails Committee was held on February twelfth, and a council presentation is scheduled for next month. A three-million-dollar land and water conservation grant application was submitted in January. Lastly, with regard to the Library and Performing Arts, we are preparing a plan for the future Library and Cultural Arts Center, including a Performing Arts Center. A community outreach meeting is scheduled for February fifteenth at seven o'clock at the Elk Grove Library Community Room. A survey is also available on our website for the community to provide feedback. A separate survey has been released to various performing arts groups throughout the city and region to understand their facility needs and how city facility could accommodate them. The results of the outreach and the proposed development plan will be presented at a future council meeting. With regard to the Cameron Road widening and extension project, the Joint Powers Authority staff intend to release a draft environmental document for public comment after their February twenty-third board meeting. The latest schedule indicates CEQA approval in May and NEPA, the National Environmental Review, approval in December. On January thirty-first, Authority staff submitted an SB one grant for multiple connector segments, including portions of Cameron east of Big Horn, while city staff submitted a separate SB one grant for the full length of Cameron Road. And with that, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Start with council reports. Member Wen.
Thank you, Mayor. I am, forgive me, I'm still fighting this flu I had for the last two weeks, and it's now turned into a cold, and it's that never-ending cough that really gets you at night, and you just are up all night. So, it's about now where it's starting to settle, where I'm just going to cough the entire night, so excuse me for that. Because I was out sick for a few weeks, I wasn't able to attend as many meetings. I did, was able to make a few. I attended the Metro Chamber Dinner. The API Legislative Caucus and Apapa had a joint event honoring Senator Jim Nelson and Speaker Anthony Rendon. I was at the Capitol Meeting where Assemblymember Jim Cooper spoke, along with the DA Amory Sherbert. I also want to give kudos to our chief, because we started our, I think it's our fifth cohort of the Links to Law Enforcement Program in partnership with Urban League and La Familia, and my understanding is that there was over thirty sign-ups for the Latino cohort, and maybe over twenty-five that signed up that were interested in becoming law enforcement officers, and so it was very well-attended. The second class will happen tomorrow night, and our offices were very much involved in that, so thank you for sending them out to that. Last night, I also attended the U.S.-China Railroad Friendship Association, where we're celebrating the one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the transcontinental railroad in California. And that's what I have.
Okay. Member Hume.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the last connector meeting, because I had a funeral over in Point Pleasant for Stanley Carruthers, who's a longtime Elk Grove resident and also served two decades on the school board. I also attended the Metro Chamber Installation Dinner, it was a great event. I did attend LAFCO last Wednesday, as was mentioned, where the Elk Grove Sphere of Influence Amendment application was approved by a four-to-three vote. And I'll just address, Vanessa, your, the comments that you made. I spoke with a lot of people prior to taking that decision, so I didn't take the decision lightly. And all of them, the first issue was to recognize, much in the way that you did, that Elk Grove will continue to grow. And once you do that, then I would ask, well, what do you want that growth to look like? And when you line it out, the, most of the people that I spoke to, if not all, did not want to go up. They wanted to have the, more of a similar feeling to how Elk Grove already is. So, I have to kind of take all of that in mind when making those types of decisions. I had the, we had the Regional Sanitation Board meeting this morning, nothing to report for Elk Grove. And then, Bob, I had a constituent reach out to me in anticipation of the construction starting for the Bradshaw Sheldon Roundabout, with concerns that the church, the southernmost entrance exit of the church, right now it has a sign that says, "Write in, write out only," and a lot of the parishioners ignore that sign, and he's concerned that once the roundabout goes in, that the rate of speed on Bradshaw will probably be a little bit higher, and so that maybe we'll need to put in a physical barrier to divide the lane, so if we can look into that and maybe incorporate it to do it at the same time. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Member Detrick.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I've been out of town on business, and when I have been around, I've been on vacation with family, so I have been less engaged in community events and more time with family in my PG&E career. But we're supposed to have the Sacramento Cable Commission meeting, and I chair that commission, they canceled the meeting this month, so I have nothing else to report.
Okay. Vice Mayor Suen.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to start off with, let's see, Happy Valentine's Day, Happy Ash Wednesday, celebration of, right, and recognized celebration of Black History Month, and Happy Lunar Chinese, or Lunar New Year, excuse me. I also want to recognize staff, I think it's a great day for Elk Grove, our public affairs folks receiving the award. I think it's well-earned. Jody, Kristen, and others have done a great job putting our city as, as well as our, I'm blanking out, what did I just miss? Our Public Works Award. We just had, anyway, sorry, blanking out that. And thank you, Chief, for getting the Community Advisory Board going. I think that's, it's great to see that go. I know you've been thinking about it for a while, and it's nice to see it taking off. As far as attending events, I was, several of the ones I mentioned earlier, we had the Library Authority Budget Committee meeting, in addition to a Library Authority meeting, Board Directors meeting, attended the WEAVE fortieth birthday anniversary. It's nice to celebrate. If you all don't know, we partner with WEAVE, Women Escaping a Violent Environment, having counselors, a counselor here in the city to take on any cases as they arise. And I think, Chief, we got to, is it okay to announce the grant that we got? A grant to have a WEAVE counselor that could be available to be onsite as needed as well, since it's supporting our police officers out there in the community. Mayor and I had a two-by-two with the Elk Grove School District, where we talked about the recent racial events that have transpired and how we can continue to work together to have an inclusive and tolerant community. Had the SACOG Transportation Committee. Mayor and I also had the opportunity to attend an Amgen Media event, so mark your calendars, folks. The week of May thirteenth, I think specifically here on May seventeenth in the city of Elk Grove, we'll have the women's start and finish, and the men's race start of, or finish of stage five. And STA, Sacramento Transportation Authority, had a And STA, Sacramento Transportation Authority, had a meeting there. Was able to be a speech, or judge at the Rotary, Laguna Sunrise Rotary Speech Contest. Great to hear a lot of our youth hone their speaking skills. We had American Leadership Forum Seminar last Friday, and then also got to celebrate the Chinese New Year Association's annual Chinese New Year event over at Hiram Johnson High School. And that's it. Thank you, everybody.
All right. The only thing I wanted to add is attended air quality and sanitation this morning, and nothing to report. A number of events that was attended by, it seems like the three that were in town, which is Stephanie, myself, and Darren, so I'll waive the remainder of my report. And let's move on.
Takes us to Section 8, our consent calendar items.
Okay. We have a consent item. I want to open to public comment. See a number of folks that are signed up to speak. First one is Ken Bennett.
I wanted to speak about the Moon Address Project. I know that often, when we start one of our houses here, you know, we have a couple of others, the Grace House in the Meadows, which are transitional, that there's always some anxiety among the neighbors and the community about what's gonna happen and everything. But we've been at the Grace House for five years now, and there hasn't been a single complaint from one of the neighbors since we started operating the program. None of our houses have had complaints from the neighbors about how the program was operating once it was open. So I want to relieve their fears and say that all of the families who'll be staying there will be Elk Grove residents and from Elk Grove, and they'll all be vetted. And I want us to think now about the homeless situation. We often think of the homeless as those individuals that we see and, with shopping carts and whatnot, and the, like the person, the woman that mentioned earlier about the young man she saw who was mentally ill, there's also the hidden homeless, homeless people that are families, they're living in their cars, they're staying in motels, they're moving around, and these are the people that would be helped in this house. Think about it, if you were in grade school, and you didn't know where you were gonna stay that night, or you didn't know where you were gonna eat that night, what kind of student would you be? You probably wouldn't be a very good student. You probably couldn't focus on your homework and your school life. So this is a great benefit to the whole community, to help these families and these children. And many of these clients will be referred to us by the school district, because the school district social workers, they identify these students and then their families who are in need, who are in unstable living environment. So I think this will be a, a great help to the families and to the neighborhoods and to the community of Elk Grove to help these people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Nope. Thank you. Next speaker is Taher Rashid. And if I mispronounce your name, please correct me.
You got it right. Thank you. Good evening. I'm a resident of this area. I live near Moon Creek Way. I've been there for 16 years. And myself, along with several other residents of the area that are here, they're opposing this project, and there's a few reasons for that. The main reason is my understanding is they're gonna turn into a 10-room place, and this is a single-family residence. Will it be rezoned for that reason, if there's gonna be 10 rooms? It will also make unsafe for our kids to go play in the parks if we have people coming in and out of the neighborhood who are not permanent residents of that neighborhood. And our kids will not have the opportunity to bond with other kids of the neighborhood who can become friends. If we're gonna have people coming in and out of these type of houses, where our children are gonna be here for a long time, they, they won't have the opportunity to associate and play with them, because people will be constantly moving in and out of these units. And furthermore, I think something like this is better suited for a multifamily-zoned subdivision, not a single family in a neighborhood, which is far away from the shopping areas, public transportation, and things of that nature. So I can understand that we're trying to help out the homeless and appreciate that, but I don't think this is the right area for these type of facilities to be in. And that's all I have to say at the moment.
Thank you, sir. Lorraine Johnson. Following Lorraine is Kiana Lu.
Hi, I live in the same area, and I agree 100%. It is a single-family area, not for what it's going to be. And can I ask a question? So is, are they asking Elk Grove to help pay for their home? They're gonna pay for the home themselves? Help you sell?
If you can just go ahead and make your comments.
It's funded with state, with, with state grant funds.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Kiana Lu, following, following Kiana is Debbie Shana Safer.
Is Kiana freaking next?
Kiana, Kiana first. And Debbie, you follow her.
Okay. Good evening, and Happy Chinese New Year to all. My name's Kiana, and I'm a resident of Elk Grove. I strongly oppose the purchase of 5725 Moon Creek Way and to turn it into a homeless boarding house. This is a RD5 low-density residential neighborhood. The house were built during 1999 to 2001 as a family-oriented residential community. The government, developer, and home buyers are bound by the Declaration of Conditions, Convenants, and Restrictions, and we are required to sign when we purchase the house when the ESCO is closed. In CCNR Article 3, Property Usage, 3.3 specifies permitted uses. One item spells out as no lots or drawing in these subdivisions may be used for a public boarding house. This city is buying four-barren house and converting into nine or 10 barrens. To occupants per room, there will be up to 20 people living this house. Utilizing this property as a homeless boarding house clearly violating the current CCNR. If this is allowed, we can all turn our home here into 10-barren boarding houses, charge $500 per rooms. Then we get $5,000 rent, that's double whatever the rent, this, this kind of house can be rented for now. And, and then we all move to other cities. I don't think this is what City of Elk Grove wants. If you allow this happens, you're pretty much, you're opening the door for class-action lawsuits. I am a single mom with two children. This deal is not about helping the homeless family with childrens. It's about the wrong location. It's breaching the binding CCNR. I drove by the existing SSHH house in the other side of Elk Grove. None of them show any pride of ownership. Front lanes were with growing weeds and bare dirt, driveways with oil stains. The letter says, "We consider it a high priority that a house remains well-maintained and asset to the neighborhood and our property values." The property will be maintained in excellent condition year-round. What I saw contradicts the letter. Please ask yourself, would you like to live next door to these houses? Do you consider this item, this, do you consider them as assets to your neighborhood or eyesore? Do you truly believe they will add value to our house? Would you buy your future home next to these houses? Putting a homeless shelter in the middle of a middle-class, family-oriented neighborhood does not represent the best interest of the people in this city. It is a lose-lose situation. I urge you to say no. Thank you.
Next speaker is Debbie. Following Debbie is David Ng.
Oh, I'm sorry. Somehow I thought I heard a janitor.
Here, come on up.
Hi, my name is Debbie Shana Safer. I'm on the Hart Board, Homeless Assistance Resource Team. I'm also the lead mentor for our current family house, which is on Meadowview Way. We're on our third set of families. Right now, we have three single moms with a total of four children. One of the things that we've recognized with these families that we didn't really anticipate is, while we're stabilizing the adults, we're literally changing the trajectory of these children's lives. We have three 13-year-olds in the house right now. All three of them are on the honor roll. We have a 10-year-old that has now come up to grade level. All three mothers are working. We have not had a bit of problems with any of them. So I just want to say that these are families. We are not interested in crowding a bunch of people into a house. What we're interested in is getting some families that are in cars right now, or possibly even out on the street, into a home where they can stabilize, and the children can move forward and be productive parts of our society. Thank you.
Debbie, if I could ask you a quick question? So, so everyone here can, can understand, how, how do you currently vet your, your residents in the house?
So, right now, another member of Hart, we're a volunteer organization, interview the families, and then Sacramento South Help Housing does a background check, drug check on the, you know, on all the adults, or anybody that may be suspect if they're, you know, possibly teenagers. And honestly, we pick the families that we feel like will be the most successful and have the greatest interest in moving up and moving out.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, before you leave, I got another quick question. And, you know, I've, I know that I've, I had a conversation with probably one of your board members, and this house will be very similar in terms of what you already have in existence.
Yes, so that would probably be better addressed to Sarah. She has more knowledge of that area. Thank you.
Thank you. David Ng, following David is Hillary Gaines.
I've been a resident in Elk Grove for over 25 years, and in my lifetime, I've been a realtor, a broker, I was to do property management for my own properties. And every time we get somebody of that caliber of a Section 8, there's nothing but trouble and headaches. The property value has gone down because they do not care about the property. I had to evict them. I feel the same way that this hotel for the homeless is coming into place through SSHH. It's gonna change the flavor of the neighborhood, it's gonna make the kids scared to go home. The crime rate will go up. They have no interest in keeping the neighborhood similar to what it was prior to these people coming into it. They have no skin in the game. And I urge you, do not change the flavor of the neighborhood just because you hear a sob story. Think about it. If this was your home, this is your children, and you come home to an SSHH situation, how would you feel? That's all I can ask. I'm talking in behalf of my children, not for me. And I worry about my children, and I pray to God that there won't be any incidents between my children and these people. They might be vetted, they might be a temporary vetted situation, but people change. They go back on drugs, they fall back into bad behavior. Don't believe what you hear. Look at the facts. That's all that matters. Please believe me, and I'm talking sincerely. I'm talking about my children, and I want to make sure that they're safe and protected, because the cops can't be there 24/7, unfortunately, and I wish they were, because my children are the best things I ever had in my life. And so, so help me God, I don't want to lose them. To these homeless people that are not interested in staying in our neighborhoods for a long time, don't change this house into a homeless hotel where they come and go. Thank you.
Hillary Gaines is our next speaker. Hillary.
I also have one more point to make. I do have an attorney looking into this matter, and they're tearing apart that CCNR line by line. And if I have to have an injunction filed, I will have an injunction filed. I swear to God. I will stop SSHH from coming in and destroying the neighborhood.
Come on up, Hillary.
Good evening, council members. I'm joined here this evening with my husband, Kevin Gaines. We reside in District 3, across the street from this Moon Creek property. When we received a letter in the mail about this, I took time to call SH, SSHH. I spoke with two of their leaders. I asked several, several questions. To give you a little background on my husband and myself, collectively, we have over 35 years of experience in social services, human services. I've worked at the program level for over 15, and my husband has worked in city, state, and government positions. We are in support of helping our community members. We are well-versed in the needs and the stressors of homelessness on children and the impacts on their education. We empathize with the need. One of the things that causes me greatest concern is that the questions I asked, which were very simple programmatic questions, were not able to be answered or answered adequately. Simply, for example, background checks. How are these residents or occupants going to be screened? You can do a DOJ/FBI background check on an adult, you cannot do that on a minor. Their information is confidential. They have no relationship or partnership with probation. So it would be very easy to accidentally end up with a juvenile sex offender in that home with nobody knowing about it. A fire setter. Those things can happen without the proper structure to the program. I asked about the housing manager. It's not a housing manager, it's a housing lead. Based upon my professional experience, those are usually residents of other programs, of, like, other houses that have graduated into a leadership role. I started my profession as a peer support, so I'm all in favor of peer support with proper structured training. When I asked the question about what kind of training will your house leader have, the response was, "They'll get some training from me." I actually was able to speak with somebody on a follow-up discussion and provide some recommendations on the kind of training their house leader should have. So my husband and I have submitted a letter for your reference that goes into much greater detail and includes many of the questions and answers that I, questions I asked, the answers that I received, and kind of some comments about concerns that are associated with that, so I hope you will take the time to read that. We are simply asking that you postpone your decision on this matter tonight until you can develop a much stronger, specific plan to ensure that the outcomes you are seeking from this kind of home or program are fully met. Outcome and evaluation measures. Clear, clarity around capacity, length of stay, supervision of, of the home, and what that looks like. So I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Janet, come on up. Following Janet is Lynn Hui.
Last time I was up, I wished everyone a Happy Valentine's Day. Most important to me is blessed Ash Wednesday. I'm hearing an awful lot of people sounding like, not in my, not in my backyard. I'd mentioned that I've lived in Sacramento, or Elk Grove now, for 28 years. During that time, I have seen a lot of change. The parcel behind me, when I bought, purchased the home, I was told that it was gonna be a park. A junior high school, middle school. I had neighbors come wanting me to sign petitions. No, everyone needs an education. Then, across the street from the school, and it's one block from my house, and then Kitty, right, right next to the school, low-income neighbors, again, came with their petitions. I didn't sign. Everyone... Everyone has to be somewhere. In the 28 years that I've owned my home, the house next to me, for a period, became a Section 8 housing. Yes, those kind of people. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little bit upset. The house across the street, the house kitty corner, I had no issues with those kind of people that needed help with Section 8 housing. In the 28 years that I lived there, I had one problem with a person who's been there 29 years. Her property owner, her daughter's boyfriend started dating a gangbanger, and there was drugs. It wasn't the Section 8, it was the good people. Nobody is created above or beneath anyone else, in my opinion. Everyone needs to be somewhere. There was talk about building up. I honestly believe that we need to have some building up, but not too much in one area, or else you're going to get a slum. Having some areas, like I completely am for purchasing this house to give some people a chance. One of the people said that people can change. But he was talking about the negative, that they're going to be vetted and be sober, but then they're going to go back to drugs. We all can change, but don't we all need a helping hand once in a while? Let's reach out, help pull some people up, get them back on their feet. Some of these people, they just got sick, lost their job, and now they need a little bit of time to regroup. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'd like to go back a couple months. And the November 8 meeting of 2017 is when this grant money, this $5 million, was presented to you as counsel, and how that money was going to be used. And a million of it was to go to a purchase of two properties. Well, I'd done some research, and we already owned three properties within our city to address homeless issues. And at that particular time, I said, we need to offer some variety of homes. We can't just use homes, but we need an option for addressing homelessness. I presented at that time a tiny home community option, thinking that that would fit well into some of our infill areas, and that we would be able to centralize services and allow our homeless individuals that don't have transportation, a means of getting away, getting around. And at that particular time, I said, we have many properties, and I just suggested one as an example, but that was taken as the one for all. So a next-door neighbor, there was a lot of attack personally against me because it was like, well, you have empty spots behind you. How about if we put it there? And I have to tell you, the communities that I've investigated, I'd be happy to have one behind me. And currently where I live, I have three group homes in my area. And what really discourages me the most is that they don't have access to a lot of opportunity. And the homes aren't really well-maintained, and I don't believe that they're very well-supervised. So yes, we do need to address the homeless. The second part that I want to address on this is I don't believe that there's been any transparency in this process at all. Because again, in December, I said, yes, it would be political suicide for us to consider, or for you politicians who need to be re-elected, to consider that we look at addressing the needs of our homeless. Well, lo and behold, I go to ZOLO, and I see that this particular house had a pending sale in December of 2017, and again in January of 2018. At the particular meeting in November, council member Soon was really quick to say, let's pass this and go with staff recommendation. And I can understand and I appreciate Councilman Hume for suggesting that we might investigate the tiny home. It was the first time he's actually ever even supported me in any one of my visionary concepts that I've brought before you. Unfortunately, he didn't get the memo that this was already a done deal, that behind the closed doors, that this was being negotiated. So of course, to solve this problem in future dates, later on, our city manager is going to be allowed to go and purchase properties at half a million within our neighborhoods. Let's continue to slip him in our neighborhoods, think that we, as a city, are doing a great deed by doing this, and not offering families different opportunities. I, for one, if I was a single mom, I would not want to be clustered together with four other families trying to make it. This is not permanent housing. We need, it's transition. We need to look at ways that we can get some permanent housing with affordable rents for some of these families so that they can be within our communities. These issues come up, and we get a crowd here tonight because there's been no discussion from you as our council people. We need the transparency to sit down and have the discussion, alleviate some of these fears around it, and work together as a community. That's who we are as a people. That's why I've lived here, is I appreciate the nonprofits and the willingness for us all to work together. But we need to build stronger neighborhoods by working together, not isolating one another or thinking we can slip projects like this through and think it's going to be okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vanessa. Vanessa, Vanessa, come on up. Following Vanessa is Wanda Cleveland.
I do agree with Lynn that there should be more transparency and more community opportunity for engagement. You know, selecting a home and then simply moving it to council is not the way to get community on board, and that's why you have a room full of people clapping against it. And I wanted to address that. All of the people clapping in opposition, a lot of the people I've heard come up here have used I-words. I would not like this. I think my children are at greater risk. I think, you know, this, they're going to be, they're going to degrade my neighborhood, they're not going to keep up the homes. I am that person, and I've shared with the council before, I am that person that was in these transitional homes. I was homeless when I was a youth. I had a single mom. We were a three-household family. We were in homeless shelters. We had the opportunity to move into Section 8 housing. I'm a Section 8 housing person. We are regular people. We are just people. There is nothing wrong with Section 8. It is a helping hand for people to move on to greater things. And obviously, I'm a community member that's engaged and participating in the process. We cannot be, we cannot continue the NIMBYism, the not in my backyard. Everybody needs food, shelter, housing, love. Those are the basic things that we need to share with one another, and compassion. And if we are only looking out for ourselves the whole time, then we are not exercising compassion. We are not engaging in a community. This is a society that we agree collectively together to participate in. If you don't want to participate in a society, there is property in Montana that's isolated, and you can move there. But if you choose to participate in a society, then there are other people that are different than you. There are other people that have, their socioeconomic is higher than you and lower than you, and their education levels are going to vary, and all of those people deserve a place to live. And all of those people are equal to you and could live next door to you. You do not have that choice as to whether or not somebody could live next to you. I don't pick my neighbors. Why should other people get to pick their neighbors? I am very concerned about the rhetoric that is happening around this, and I think it is a product of the lack of community engagement. A lot of these, a lot of these things, like, you know, that could be dispelled, were brought up by the lady that used to be a social worker. Those are definite questions that need to be addressed, that she initiated a conversation about, absolutely. And those are things that should be brought up in a community forum, and definitely not at council, because then you have this, people on one side and people on the other, defending their position. I stood here listening to people talk about how they don't want people like me in their neighborhood. Well, I could not be vetted, you're right. I could not get my fingerprints checked and get a background check. But every homeless person that I ever met, living in shelters, living in community housing, they were great people. They were just regular people, and they were not people that were in it to hurt children or their neighbors, or to watch the property, you know, be dilapidated and disgusting. So again, these are people, and they deserve a place to live.
Thank you. Next speaker is Wanda Cleveland. Following Wanda is Matthew Landurles.
Good afternoon, evening. I also agree with what she's saying. I also am one of those people. I was homeless with three kids in Sacramento. Nobody helped me get anywhere. They didn't have programs like housing. And if someone came to my neighborhood and says, we want to buy a house and put these kind of people in there, I'd say, yes, please do that. Because until, until somebody's done something wrong, you can't accuse them of being a felon until they've been prosecuted, and you guys were already prosecuting these people. People have a right to a life. Right now, I'm getting ready to be homeless, and it's not my fault, okay? But I'm one of them. I don't like being told, we have them in us. It's not them in us. We're all human. We all have blood. We all bleed the same way.
No place for hate.
There's no place for hate.
Please just make your comment.
It has infuriated me as I'm sitting there, listening to these people, as I have done in Sacramento. And you know now, those people from not my backyard also come together, and we're working together now. So it can happen, if these guys will allow it to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew, come on down. Following Matthew is Fred Bremmerman.
Good evening, council. The comments that I want to address is really the timetable. When a young lady, a previous speaker, came to the podium speaking about this project, the vast majority of the surrounding neighborhood adjacent to this facility, our home, had no idea this was going to occur. So as far as transparency, nobody knew. Hence why you have a vast majority of the people who actually live next door to this home probably in opposition. At the same point in time, there is a certain fact that people that are afforded the opportunity to purchase a home, they go into those neighborhoods, they seek out the property they wish to purchase, they vet those areas, and they say, hey, this is where I want to lay down roots. This is a single-family resident neighborhood. So when I went into this neighborhood, I vetted it, I looked around, I talked to the neighbors, and I asked, is this a good place to live? And granted, we can go base on mathematics and low income versus to boarding houses and who lives or who doesn't live there. You know, we have good people, you have bad people. But no one's given the neighborhood the opportunity to make that decision. And at the same point in time, you're asking us to accept without us having any definitive transparency to see what is the process, but more importantly, we should be allowed the opportunity to say, no, we do not want this for our community because we are happy with its current state. Most of us purchased our home with that same concept. We came into this neighborhood, we looked around. But now you're trying to establish something which I think probably does have a purpose, and it does have good merit. But at the same point in time, who's making the deciding factor? You as councilman for the city to make sure that this is something that's viable? But at the same point in time, who's going to account in the event, yes, people's fears if something does occur? Okay? You can't establish that without things happening. And as far as, I don't know how long this program's been around. I don't know what incidents has occurred with occupants that have been established in these homes. I don't, because there is no transparency. There's nothing I can readily read that I would feel comfortable with. I haven't visited any of these homes. I literally found out last night that this was occurring, and instead of being in school for my education tonight, I had to be here. I didn't have time to even research, so it's kind of like, what am I speaking to? I'm only listening before I chose to speak. But at the same point in time, I believe the neighborhood has the right, because they are the ones that have been there. They are the ones that purchased there. They're the ones who've earned the right to say, yes or no, this is my neighborhood, this is what I would want to be in it. And if you take, if you take that away and establish the city's power struggle, then you're going to run into issues. And that's basically what I want to speak to.
Thank you, Matthew. Fred Bremmerman? Fred Bremmerman. Following Fred is Eskinder Tadessa.
Good evening, council. John Adams once said, "Facts are stubborn things." And whatever may be our wishes, our inclinations, or the dictates of our passions, they cannot alter the state of facts and evidence. Do we have evidence to say that there's a reason that you should vote in favor of this? I could tell you that I have skin in the game. I've been involved with the homeless assistance resource team for seven years now. I was one of our founding members. During that time, we've had two homes now that have been very successful. You've heard a little bit about them. The Grace House from 2013, and the Meadow House from 2015, one for individuals and one for families. Now, if we're to, if we're to look at what we have been discussed here, according to the staff report, which has facts, it says there will be caseworkers actively assisting residents to secure permanent housing. There will be three two-bedroom suites. You'll know that HART began here in Elk Grove, and it started in five other communities, four other communities, five total now. They also are looking at housing models just like ours. Is it because they have all of the problems that are being expressed tonight? Are those the facts, or are those the fears? And I would say those are the fears, not the facts. The facts are that we have a successful housing model. It's not the only one, and I too support what Lynn says, that we look, need to look at alternatives. But if we want to make sure that nobody lives near us that does drugs, starts fires, or anything else, then you better not just look at people who are homeless, you better look at everybody, okay? Those are the facts. Now, I'm not saying that the people moving in are perfect. I don't know about your neighbors, mine aren't perfect. Some of my neighbors think I'm not perfect either, okay? That's not the issue. The issue is who has a right to do this? Now, we just heard the previous speaker say that the neighborhood has a right. I would beg to differ. I would say the community has a right. The community has a right to take care of the community. These are not people who are moving here from out of state, and gosh, we better find them a home. These are people who've fallen into homelessness in our community. Now, if you think that it's not going to get worse, then I think that is a fact that you're deluding yourself. All you got to do is look up the road a few miles, and you can see what happens from inaction. Working with Sarah, HART, and others have been very proactive in trying to address issues of homelessness. This is not the be-all, end-all. And when we talk about having skin in the game, I can tell you that our website's been around for five years, and it would be really easy for people to get involved with us who want to play a part. I'm the one in charge of our winter sanctuary. This homeless hotel, sounds great for a talking point, it's not true, okay? Three two-bedroom suites is not a homeless hotel. Living case manager, or living house manager, yeah. Is there going to be case managers assist? You bet. Those are the facts, and I hope you'll consider the facts as you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker, Eskinder. If I mispronounced your name, I'm sorry. Please correct me.
Good evening. My name is Eskinder Tadessa. I live two, three blocks away from the subject property. I think I, my, I heard both sides of the argument, but one of my things is it's not about, the people say like about hate, the homeless, or being biased. But I think it's being, it's being very practical, the way this program is done. I think, quite frankly, I think the issue I think I see is not the people or the neighborhood. I think it comes to you guys, the mayors, and the city of Elk Grove should have selected a better place for the people that are homeless or that are in need of help, not in that area. Because 90% of the people here, 90% of the people actually came here to an opposition, and we're not to oppose the homeless. And the person just before me mentioned that it's not the neighborhood, it's the community actually opposing this. So the fact is actually, we, that community has been flourishing, has been doing good, has been contributing to the city, so we need to continue to do that. And it's not going to be drained to the resource, to police, or the fireplaces. Every time somebody called in, that's a time that's been wasted. The city should find, I think, a lot, and I'm also been in this industry developing, if the city finds a lot, use the money, almost $2 million, it could build at least 20, 25 units that could support this. Why go through the neighborhood and... Why go through the neighborhood and distract this kind of living style? So I think that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no additional public speakers sign up to speak, want to close public comment. And members, shall we deliberate on this, or how shall we proceed? Recommendations?
Mayor, I'd request Sarah could come to the podium and a couple of things. One, perhaps give a timeline, starting with when the strategy that was developed, the overall homeless strategy that was developed, the timeline in which we considered it, adopted it, how you arrived at this property location. And then finally, if you could address some of the questions around Section 8 versus homeless tenants, capacity, length of stay, background checks, and housing leader training. I know it's a lot. I can repeat it later, but...
You might need to remind me of what some of those topics are. But I'll start with the timeline. So we were granted, thanks to the efforts of Assemblyman Cooper, in the State of California's Budget Act of 2017, the city was awarded a total of $5 million for helping to navigate homeless people to housing. In November, we brought forward to the council an item that broke down that $5 million into three major categories. One was outreach and navigation services for folks. One was having a temporary place for folks to stay, a navigation hub concept. And the last one was permanent housing solutions. You allocated, at that time you indicated $1 million for acquisition of two navigation hubs, one to serve families and one to serve singles. And asked staff to please explore whether there were other permanent housing options that would fit the community, including tiny homes. And we will, I have spent a lot of time researching tiny homes, went to visit some in Texas, have met with all the folks who do it locally. And we will be bringing an item back on that in the near future to talk more about that. So I won't get too sidetracked with that tonight.
And there was a, I'm sorry for interrupting. First of all, Lynn, see, I did agree with the tiny home concept. Secondly, the multi-tiered strategy, there was a reason behind that.
Yes, yes, because the state funds were for navigating homeless people to housing. So we had a three-point strategy. One was outreach. How can we better reach out to people who are homeless? How can we connect them with resources, including our housing resources, but also including mental health and addiction treatment options, job training, and other things that can help them get their life back on track? And then the next thing in our continuum, kind of an interim step there, is the winter sanctuary that the HART group runs. But, you know, we needed a short-term housing option for folks. Sometimes people just need, you know, a place to stay. We can work with them quickly. They can get an apartment, and they can move. And they, you know, go on to be successful in that. But there are some people who are going to need some longer-term assistance. So we also addressed that in our strategy by allocating some money to that, which is, you know, possibly the tiny homes concept, possibly other permanent housing concepts. So what we're here today to talk about is the navigation hub. So when we received the direction from the council in November that we should pursue the two navigation hubs, we started looking at properties. I know Lynn Wheat mentioned that there was a pending offer on the property. We were fortunate when we found this property. It looks like a very good property for the type of use we want. It had had a previous offer from someone who was not able to continue forward with the purchase. And so it was put back on the market, at which time the city put an offer on the property. As soon as we put the offer on the property, and right now it's a very competitive market, so we have to move fairly quickly in order to make these purchases. As soon as we put the offer on it, we started our public outreach strategy, and we sent letters to neighbors within 300 feet of the property itself. And it sounds like they've shared with their neighbors as well.
I'm going to stop you for just a sec. So two things. One, why, what, there's a lot of houses in Elk Grove. What attracted you to this property, characteristics? And then secondly, why did you wait to reach public outreach after you made the offer?
So what attracted us to this property was that we were looking for a property that was well-suited to families, which meant a bigger property with at least three bathrooms, which this property does have, in an area that's fairly proximate to schools and transit and shopping, all of which this property had. We've also been looking to expand. Our two current houses are both in the Old Town area, and so we've been looking to expand. There's no one neighborhood that should share, that should take the full burden of housing homeless in our community. So we've been looking to expand into other neighborhoods. And so this property came up. We went out, we looked at it. It has a very nice upstairs loft that would work as a couple of additional bedrooms in the house. The layout is nice for the house manager. He would be located most likely down in one of the downstairs bedrooms and be able to see what was happening in the house. Most likely she would be able to see what was happening in the house and make sure that the residents are not causing any problems for each other or for the neighborhood.
Outreach timing.
And so the outreach timing was, we, consistent with the city's strategy on real estate purchases, we brought forward the item to the council at a closed session. And then we made an offer on the property. Rather than, sometimes the seller accepts the offer, sometimes the seller doesn't. And so we try not to make everyone concerned about an issue before it's, you know, a potential reality. And so as soon as we had an accepted offer, we started our public outreach.
Thank you.
Okay. So then your second part of your question was addressing some of the comments about how the house is managed. So I will try to, actually, I have a few, well, I won't worry about the PowerPoint, actually. So in terms of selecting tenants for the house, all of the tenants will be families with minor children, at least one child. And there is a background check, a national-level background check that is done on the adults. And there is also a drug test that is done on the household. So those things help to ensure that we are not, that the folks who move in have passed the background check and a drug test. This house is a little bit different than the transitional housing in that it's intended to be a fairly short stay, which means that none of the tenants have leases in this case, which makes it very easy to get rid of someone who is causing a problem. You simply say, "This is a program. This program isn't working out for you. You need to move on." So if there are problems, they can be addressed really quickly. And hopefully, that would bring the residents, the neighbors, some comfort. The house managers that Sacramento Self-Help Housing has, some of them have come through their other programming and been successful. Not all of them, that's true for. They do an application process, just like you would for any other job. They do a background check on their staff, on their house leaders. And they have a series of training opportunities for them. The house manager training includes training in de-escalation, in trauma-informed care, since many of the folks there, being homeless, is, you know, a form of trauma, and cultural competency. And then they work for a period of time with one of the, with some of the best house leaders in the region. And Sacramento Self-Help Housing has, I think, over 30 of these houses in Sacramento County right now. So they work with and live in one of the best houses in the region and learn from that house leader on, you know, how to effectively manage the house, how to deal with tenants who, you know, may not be doing what's asked of them. There is also a full-time supervisor of the house managers, full-time paid staff who goes around and works with the house managers on their skills development, on solving any problems that they may be having in the house. Let's see. So of course, there will be no sex offenders in the house because they do have to pass a background check. I think that covers, remind me if I missed anything?
No, I think you hit everything except, the only thing I want to add on, house leader training. You mentioned there's a, it sounds like an area supervisor.
Yes.
And so how often do they check in? Is it periodically or randomly?
I think it is both. I think they have periodic meetings of the house leaders in the region. I think they do come around to each of the houses from time to time to meet with the house leader. I expect that much like, you know, much like any job, that manager is going to provide more assistance to house leaders who might be struggling than they are to those who are being really successful.
Okay. Well, the last thing I just want to say, you're the one I wanted to congratulate on your new position.
Thank you.
Being a leader in this field. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question on the juveniles.
Yes.
Would you place, and how would you know if juvenile records are confidential?
So with the juveniles, that is a tricky thing. Most of the families that we have have younger children. That's been historically true throughout our time at the Meadow House. You know, when you're dealing with kids who are three and five years old, that's generally not a huge concern. However, you are right that juvenile records are not generally available. But the rules of the, the rules of conduct at the house are clear. And so in the event that there was any problem, it is very easy. You just tell that family, you know, "You need to move on. This isn't the right place for you if there are problems that arise."
Do families have social workers?
There is a case manager that works with each of the families. The case manager provides an individualized case plan for each of the families, focused on helping them find new housing as quickly as possible, but also makes referrals to job training organizations, other social services, educational organizations, and, you know, just whatever that family would need to meet their goals.
I'm thinking along the lines of, you know, going one step further and having conversation with the caseworker or even with probation. Would that be within the scope of filtering and determining whether a family would be a good fit at this particular home?
So if the, are you talking about a juvenile?
Yeah, I guess my concern is, one of the speakers have brought up a point, juvenile records are confidential. I understand that and appreciate that. But, you know, couldn't a conversation be had with a probation officer? And given that these are the parameters in which, for this particular household, we do not want any, you know, offenders, sexual offenders, couldn't that be a parameter that we give to the respective caseworker or probation officer?
I think as long as that we're perfectly legal, yes, I'd be comfortable with asking them to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be curious, Mr. Hobbs, whether that would be something that we can actually put on this particular...
Yeah, you can certainly have a conversation with those folks. What they can and cannot disclose is going to be restricted by state law, but there's nothing wrong with asking the question.
Right, you know, obviously, we can set the criteria, and it's on them to follow it. And, you know, in the event that we discover something else, and I can see your next step, which is you've got to move on. The other question I had, and I directed it to one of the HART board of directors, but perhaps maybe you could elaborate on that. The homes would be similar to the HART?
The homes would be similar to the transitional housing. The primary difference would be the length of stay. So in transitional housing, we expect people to work a program. When they move in, we expect for families that they'll be there for about a year. We recognize that that's a great opportunity for families, but that you can't serve as many families when you do that. So we are, right now, locally and regionally, we are really struggling. We have money to spend to help people get into new housing, but we have nowhere for them to stay while they're looking for that new housing. Finding an apartment takes 60 to 90 days, maybe longer if you have an eviction on your record, or, which frankly, many homeless do. That's why they're homeless in the first place. And so there's nowhere for you to stay while you're looking for housing. We have money to help with deposit assistance, even a short-term rental subsidy. But there's just, you know, if you're staying in your car with your kids, you can be enrolled in one of those programs and looking for housing, but you're still sleeping in your car with your kids.
Okay. One of the speakers spoke to the number of people that could potentially be in the home. What's the max capacity?
So I would say there will be, there will be two, there will be, so there will be a total of six bedrooms, three two-bedroom suites, and then one room for the house manager. And so generally, you know, it can vary a little bit. Generally, we would say no more than two per bedroom. And that's uncommon that we hit that in every bedroom. So that would be a maximum of, I suppose, 13 people.
13.
But, you know, there could be some circumstances where, in most cases, it would be fewer people than that.
Yeah. In the other homes, what has been the trend?
In the other homes, we have typically had, we've typically had household sizes of three or four, or actually, two to four. So we have not hit, we have not hit the max in our Meadow Grove house, which is a similarly sized house.
Percentage-wise, what would you say, 80%, 75%?
Are, what, two people per bedroom?
Yeah.
25% maybe are two people per bedroom.
25% of occupancy per, yeah, that's pretty low.
It's not, it's not that much. And under state law, you know, this falls into basically the definition of transitional housing. And we cannot, under state law, apply rules that would not apply to any other home in that same zone. So for example, an occupancy limit, we would not be able to apply something. You know, if we weren't going to say that no one in that neighborhood could have, say, 10 people living in their house, we could not say that for this house either. But we have, you know, we have, we have typically kept it at no more than two per bedroom.
Okay, so it's 13, not 20. One of the speakers mentioned that.
Correct, yeah. And it will likely be lower than that, realistically.
Okay. The other thing, and I know you said this already, but I wanted to highlight it in particular. Notice, you've given proper notice to, you said, 300 feet radius of the home?
We, the city is not legally required to notice any property owners of a property purchase like this. As a public outreach and as, you know, understanding that this is an important issue for the community, yes. As we have done with our past property purchases, we did send notification to property owners within 300 feet. And fortunately, these days with neighborhoods like, or with websites like Nextdoor, the notice tends to spread much wider.
Okay. And the last point I wanted to make is, and you mentioned this briefly, because the vice mayor has already asked you about this. But Lynn Wheat brought up a good point, and you touched upon it. There was a sales pending, and it did not go through. That is why the misleading information indicates that sales was pending in December.
Yes, that's accurate, yes. We did not make an offer on this property until January.
Okay, all right, excellent. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of process-related questions. First of all, Mr. Hobbs, the one speaker referenced the CCNRs and provisions against a boarding house. Can you address whether or not this is a permissible use in those CCNRs?
Yes, again, so starting with the zoning code, this would be a permissible use under your zoning code. Your zoning code would allow things like transitional homes and coming to the council. It's already been through the planning commission. You'll be getting an express definition of a navigation hub, which would address this. In the meantime, transitional homes would be a permitted residential use under your zoning code. That ties into whether or not the CCNRs would be consistent with this use. As a residential use, it wouldn't be considered a business. And I'm comfortable that in having reviewed the CCNRs, this would not be a violation of those. The CCNRs are generally designed to prohibit things like businesses. This would not be considered a business, per se. It might look like it from some standpoint, but it's essentially a residential use, which would be consistent with the zoning code and the CCNRs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And Sarah, can you go over sort of, I guess, the world as it exists for the two existing houses and how they've been received and how the residents have performed and kind of the track record?
Yes, so both of those houses, when we purchased them, did receive opposition from the neighbors. After the city had completed them and transferred them to the nonprofit, I have not received any complaints from neighbors. PD, in five years that the Grace House has been open, in the two and a half that the Meadow House has been open, our police department has not received any neighbor calls, and our code enforcement has not received any neighbor calls. I received once, one neighbor call. They wanted to know why there were police cars at the house. It turned out that our police department, it was around Thanksgiving, and they had delivered a meal to the tenants. So that is the only call that I have received in five years. So my understanding is that the neighbors have not, have not had any particular issues with the properties.
And one of the speakers mentioned the upkeep of the exterior of the homes. Do we have standards as to what level SSH... Do we have standards as to what level SSH needs to maintain the yards and things?
We do have standards for that, and I will certainly go out and review those properties with them. I do know we have been working with some volunteer organizations to redo some of the landscaping at the properties to make it more drought-friendly, and so that may be in progress and that, that could be a factor in the, you know, in the comment that was made.
Okay. And then, the last thing I'll say is related to process, I think, given the fact that we've been speaking about this for the better part of an hour, that this probably didn't deserve to be on consent.
I agree with you.
And I, I'm going to mention that more under item 10.1, as far as engaging the community in a real way. The unfortunate thing with real estate purchases is we have to have a discussion about price and terms and things, et cetera, in closed session, prior to you taking any action. And certainly in a, in a real estate transaction, you don't want to broadcast the fact that you're interested in purchasing a property. So there's, it's an ugly situation because we can't solicit the input on a specific proposal prior to having at least some of the sort of factors in place. And so it's, it's a little backwards, but it's the way it has to go down. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Hume asked many of the questions that I had on here, but I did have somebody ask me if these houses were going to house residents from Sacramento in, in the county and not just residents in Elk Grove, and how are we identifying them? Is it through a partnership with the school district that are identifying children that they know of that are homeless?
Yes, the school district is a valuable resource in identifying homeless families. Some families whose children are not old enough to be school-aged yet, we see them through other programs. Sometimes our police department comes across them sleeping in their cars. You know, that, that's one thing that sometimes happens. So we wouldn't limit it to the school district, but we do have a policy, as we do for our other houses, that all of the residents have to have a documented connection to Elk Grove. We have a navigator now who goes out and does outreach and will verify that folks are staying in Elk Grove, see where they're living, see where they're parking their car. And there's, there's a good bit of interaction that takes place to document that before they are invited to live in the house.
And I do agree with, excuse me, Councilmember Hume, that, you know, we have a lot of folks that are here, and I don't think anybody's against helping the homeless population in our homeless community, it's just finding what the right process is or what the right fit is going to be. And so I would like to talk about maybe having a community-driven process like we did to give the community opportunity to kind of give input, or maybe help us come together with a plan on what we can all buy into and what, what we feel would fit for our city here, because what's done in other cities is not necessarily going to be the right fit for our city here.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Well, Sarah, I don't have any questions, so if you want to sit down, you can sit First of all, thank everybody for coming out tonight. I thought there were some very, very articulate comments on, on both sides of this. And this is, obviously, as was mentioned, not just here in Elk Grove, but regionally, statewide, and nationally, this homeless issue's getting worse all the time. Unfortunately, I look at this as kind of a, a Band-Aid to the situation. As, I believe it was Matthew, Matthew, you're the one with the baby, right?
That's correct.
Matthew, I think you articulated some of my feelings on changing anything you do in a neighborhood when people have had the opportunity to do their diligence. And I've spoke against rezoning some different areas, because the same type of thing, people moved in, they knew what the zoning was there, and then you're going to change it. It's not what you bought into. And as much as I want to help the homeless, I think we need to do way, way more than we're doing. And I think I've had the discussion with our city manager, Laura Gill. I know San Antonio has a model that's a very interesting model. It basically has an intake process. It helps people with medical, dental, jobs, they have all the social services there, they have areas restricted for families so that people that are single are away from the families. We need something like that regionally. And I think what we need to do is we need to take the $5 million we already have allocated, couple with the others in the region. I know that we've had a discussion, Sacramento County has a couple vacant facilities that are basically a campus already, and that would be a perfect opportunity to be able to be a regional player, take care of the regional needs, not just Elk Grove's needs. It would not be putting it in people's neighborhoods that they bought in and they said, "This isn't what we agreed to." And, and I, I think the, the goal is, is to help these people not only get in the transition, but take them all the way through the process and get them back in to be fully self-sustained in our society. And, you know, the, these will help, you know, a few people here and there, but it, it does not help, it, it doesn't fix the root of the problem. And I really want to, I was going to ask our city manager if she could maybe expand on the San Antonio model, if that's something also, if the council's willing to have you work with the rest of the cities and mainly the county. And I know you have some very good contacts at the county.
First off, let me tell you a little bit about Haven for Hope. It is a 22-acre facility that is in the industrial part of San Antonio. It is in, the, the closest housing is probably a half a mile away. It does have an intake facility, it has, and it has both a place for residents, I mean, they're called guests at that point, who are homeless and are not ready to, for services or education or whatnot, and they're free to come and go, and they have a safe space to leave their belongings and that kind of thing. When they are ready for job training, for substance abuse assistance, they are, they then become residents, and they are, and, you know, there are various residents for singles as well as families. They do have homeless families that are served in that facility. The school system is very accommodating to make sure that the, the kids have some sort of anonymity so that, you know, the other kids don't rec, don't know that these, these particular children are residents of Haven for Hope. The real issue here is one of cost. You have the land at 22 acres, and then you have all of the facilities that need to be developed in order to provide this type of intensive programming. The, it was, it was started by a philanthropist, basically of a former vice president of Valero Oil, who donated his money and time to get this up and running. And it, and they cited it on the site of a former ice cream manufacturing facility. But it's still millions of dollars to build and millions of dollars to operate, and the city of San Antonio and the county of Bejar, B-E-X-A-R, I think, they don't really put in that much money toward it. It's a lot of philanthropic endeavors that keep this thing, this operation alive. I had the opportunity to visit. It is a very impressive facility, but basically, you are, you are essentially bringing all of these homeless folks from the San Antonio area into one facility. Speaking of, about Sacramento County, I know that there will be, they are scheduling field trips to go down there to see that model as well. They were supposed to go down about three weeks ago, but because of an ice storm in the area, that it was canceled, but they are going to be going down there to take a look at that facility. But I think the real, the real crux of it is that you're going to need to find land in, basically, an industrial area that is not that close to residential areas, and that's going to be fairly hard to find. But, I mean, it's not impossible. But it's going to take a lot of, a lot of help, and it can't be just government. It's got to be, you know, civic and private sector support to help, because this is a very expensive endeavor to do and to pull off, but they're very successful at it.
I'd, I'd like to see the, pursue the feasibility, and as we mentioned, I know that the county has some facilities that are vacant that potentially could be...
Yeah, the problem there is that their facilities are very close to residential areas, and so what they're doing right now, they were, they were trying to cite a 75-bed triage center that they have now scattered. They're, they're now running that through 15 scattered sites around the county because they could not find their facilities themselves outside of, of the Boys Ranch or, or close to residential areas.
Well, Boys Ranch would be a feasibility.
And I will, I will pass that along.
So I will not support the purchase of this home and moving into a neighborhood.
Sarah, I got a question for you. The, let me see, the social worker, let's see, Hillary Gaines, who came to the podium and spoke?
Yes.
Have you had a conversation with her?
I have not. I would love to connect with her outside.
Okay, I don't know if she's still here, but if you can connect, yeah, great. If you can connect with, with Sarah, I think that you being from the field, I, what you have raised is legitimate concerns, and if they are, I'm hoping that, you know, Sarah will be able to, to, you know, mitigate your concerns. You know, I've heard a lot of speakers tonight, and the most important part is, you know, I, I appreciate all of you coming out, and I am a little bit troubled with some of the statements in regards to those people. Well, I have to tell you that for me and my family, I was one of those people, and I freely share with you that I think society and how we are measured is how we treat those who are less fortunate, those elderly, those youngs, those disabled. These are things that are very valid, and there's never a quick solve to these real legitimate issues, but I can tell you that I grew up in Section 8 housing, and it wasn't until I went to UC Davis, and it wasn't until I bought my first home in Elk Grove, that my parents got out of Section 8 housing. Lived in government housing all my life. And you can't throw a blanket over all of those people and assume that they're all the same, because we all need a break sometimes. And when I think of that from a policy standpoint, we have to make a stand at one point or another. And I can tell you, if I was those people, then I would be in prison, I would be a drug addict, but yet I defy the odds, and I truly believe that for many of the students that I see on a daily basis in juvenile hall, they have just been given a raw deal. They've been dealt with a deck of cards, that, a hand of cards, that, that they just really just need a chance, and you can't save all of them, but for the ones that, that we do make a difference, I think this is an opportunity for us to do that. I hear your concerns, I value your input, but, you know, my heart aches when I hear that label being placed on those people. And I, if anything, I am one of those people who defy the odds. So thank you very much for your, all of you for coming tonight, and that being the case, are we made it ready to move forward?
I'd like to make a couple of comments if I can.
Go ahead.
First of all, I, I agree with Councilmember Detrick, his idea for a more global solution. However, I think that's a long and expensive and cumbersome process that, that does not address any immediate needs, even if, if you're saying we're not doing enough, that would unfortunately pigeonhole us into an action of not doing anything. I also agree with Councilmember Wynn that I think a workshop where we can vet out current city strategy, we can vet out what a homeless, or, excuse me, a tiny home strategy might look like, and the populations for which it serves. And that's because, and I appreciate that this is a very heated issue, not only from a private property and a, and a community standpoint, but also from a humanity standpoint of trying to, as was said, put a blanket over everybody as though they are all the same. In the world of autism, they talk about people being on the spectrum, because somebody who is autistic is not necessarily person A is exactly like person B because they both have autism. Well, homelessness is, is much the same way. People are on a spectrum of homelessness, and you have, I think in our mind's eye, we envision perhaps the area around Loaves and Fishes, or the camps that get set up along freeways or under bridges, and that's, that's the only homeless that we picture in our mind's eye. But the reality is, the, the people that this home would serve, they're on the bubble. We're trying to keep them from not being homeless. We're trying to keep those kids from having, so they have some sort of stability, so that they don't spin out into a cycle of, of self-medication or abuse or, or who knows what. And I think it's important to note, and that's why I asked Sarah about this, is because for the other two houses that we did, especially the Grace House, I don't remember it so much on the Meadow House, but especially for the Grace House, there was a lot of community opposition from the neighborhood to do it. And that's, that's for individuals, and so it's primarily men that live there on their own. This is, this would be women with children. After the Grace House opened, many people came to the council and actually thanked us because the house was in better condition after having been renovated and made ready than it was in existing condition. And in all of these instances, you know, if somebody brought up the idea of, of having someone renting next to you, you know, when you have a renter move in and being, having dealt with renters, it's a crapshoot on what you get and how they treat the house and what kind of people they are, and then trying to get them out if something is wrong, the law totally favors the tenants over the landlords. In this situation, though, you're going to have at least some level of oversight, and SSH has been doing this for the, in partnership with the city, and as said, you know, somebody mentioned about, Fred mentioned about the facts. The facts are, they've done a great job with the two houses, which potentially could be more prone for issue than, than for this house, because of, again, that this house is really trying to cycle people, either get them out of their car into permanent housing or keep them from sliding to homelessness, or, you know, really act more as, as a landing pad. So I, I agree that I'd like to look at doing more, but I think that this is something that, that we need to do as a, you know, mentioned a Band-Aid, but I think it's a stopgap. And, you know, you, you got to stick your finger in the dam every now and then to keep the water back, so I will, I'll support it.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Difficult issue for sure. You know, it's, you've, you've seen the headlines, you've seen it on TV. Councilman Hume mentioned Loaves and Fishes, under the bridges, along the rivers. It's something that I've been diving into since I got on this council, attending seminars. You know, the, the most recent one was the League of Cities this past year, and you should have seen the number of either elected officials or city staff that stocked that room at the Sacramento Convention Center. I mean, it was standing room only, everybody trying to get a handle on this, on this issue, this very real issue. And I, I empathize with your concerns, it is on your doorstep, so to speak, but as Councilmember Hume said, this is about getting people off the streets. This is about trying to prevent this problem from exacerbating. And so, you know, I appreciate us trying to explore different options, and it's something, the reason why I asked Sarah to give you a timeline is because this is, this was not something that just came up out of the Crackerjack box. You know, we've been talking about this strategies, and if, if there's one thing I would most definitely agree upon is, is Councilman Wynn and, and Hume mentioned it, is to have a workshop and at least share with you what Sarah's found out, what we've found out, and why we arrived about this, the strategy, the three-point strategy that was publicly advertised and discussed at the council meeting, public meeting. And I apologize that we weren't able to get the word out enough to all of you. We tried our very best advertising the meeting, the staff report, websites, Facebook, and so we're doing what we can to reach out to all of you, to let you know these things are happening. We're not immune to this, right? We're not immune to homelessness in, in this region or in this, in this nation, for that matter. So these, these strategies, this, the three-point strategies were something that was carefully thought of. We did make an amendment, as, you know, was mentioned by, by Lynn, and, and we adopted that to investigate that as well. I'm also open, Councilman Detrick, for a more regional solution, your San Antonio idea. I do agree with Councilman Hume that this is something that's going to take more regional collaboration, because if the folks out here, you're feeling this way about your neighborhood, imagine what any of the... imagine what any of our Sacramento County leaders, Sacramento city leaders are feeling, and any other leaders, Folsom, Citrus Heights, pick your, pick your city, we're all going through the same thing. Nobody wants it around in their backyard. And specifically for our city, as was mentioned earlier, we've got two homes already on the east side. We, something, one thing I like about the way the, the governance structure is for this council, we represent the entire city, therefore, you know, we live in our districts, we represent the entire city. Therefore, I do care about making sure we're not overburdening any one corner of our city. So this is a, this was a house that was found on, on this side of town, on the west side of town, so to speak. The strategy is proven, we've talked about self-help housing, you heard Mr. Bremmerman talk earlier, and Councilman Hume mentioned about Grace House and Meadowview House, their success rates, and the lack of complaints they've had between law enforcement and code enforcement since they opened up. It's an immediate impact, given the funds that we have, we can start to get people off the streets right away. And finally, it's economically feasible so that with the budget that we have right now, again, we can make a meaningful impact. So, you know, I, I will support this, but I do want to make sure that we have, you know, outreach to, to everybody again about the strategies, and we're, we're taking suggestions. If you guys have ideas, we want to hear them. We talked about tiny homes, we'll, we'll look at San Antonio and any others. So going forward, we can have maybe a more effective strategy. And one final thing, I know it's kind of an amendment. We, we talked about the need to, to do, or to, to close escrow on this. Would it be possible to, to inquire about an extension of escrow? Is that, you know, is that something we can, just for folks? I don't know that anything's going to change folks' minds, to be honest with you, but.
It's actually, it's actually, it's perfect because I wanted to ask you that question as well. Can you explain why that's not possible?
So we can always ask for an extension of escrow, but my understanding is that the property owners are interested in selling the property quickly, and that's one of the reasons that they accepted the city's offer, we're a cash buyer, and we can close pretty quickly. I don't exactly know what their particular reasons are for wanting that quick close, but I have gotten the impression in speaking with our real estate team that, that they may not be willing to extend the closing.
Is it scheduled for tomorrow?
It is scheduled for Friday.
Friday.
So let me, I'll just ask the question in the group. Is there anything that would be said that would even change anyone's minds?
Want to come up to the podium? Thank you.
I think for my husband and myself, speaking on both of our behalf, I would like to see a lot more structure in the contract to hold whatever provider is providing these services to. Expectations written out, outcomes written out, what kind of, there's formal training for the house lead, what the length of stay is, what, what the occupancy can, maximum occupants would be if it's legal to dictate that. So that there's some reassurances, and there's some teeth in this, right? I've, I've worked in program for years. If there's no teeth in the contract, there's hard to go back and undo it, right? So before we launch this, let's make sure it's launched with all the details that need to be there, and make sure it has teeth in it to, to hold accountable the people providing these services.
And with all due respect, we, they've launched it five years ago, and we, and the, and the second house has been open now for over two years. So the, the teeth is there, we feel, again, it's something that's, the Meadowview, and that's another thing, is we can give a tour to anybody who would like, we can arrange for a tour. Obviously, we, we need to plan, but just so you can see, I've toured the Grace House, you can see what the conditions are like, how folks are living, and, and hopefully provide you some comfort with what this.
I think this is all a new model. A navigation hub is not what the other homes are. So you're seeing a higher turnover rate, you're seeing potentially a lot more families coming through because if you have a transitional housing program that, okay, they're going to stay for six months to a year, right? You can only let so many people in at one time, your intake process is slower, your turnover is slower. When you're talking about a sixty-day stay, it's a new model to, to this city, and you have a lot more people rolling through that home. And I, and I've worked with a lot of different housing programs similar to this throughout the county. The agency that I work for is a countywide agency, and some of those ran really well, and a lot of them did not. And it has to do with the skills of the leadership and how they're overseen.
Okay, would you mind meeting with Sarah, and so?
I'm absolutely open to doing that.
Be able to incorporate some of your comments and address your concerns?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I'm happy to work with you on, you know, reviewing the contract and the deed restriction that we do on the home, and, you know, if there are ways to incorporate feedback from, from Hillary or, you know, or her fellow community members, I'm open to that.
Okay.
Excellent, great.
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
You know, I, I'll just add in there, this, this is really one of those that really touches me as well, too, only because in my day job, I run an organization that works with low income and those that are on the borderline of homelessness. And I have to find ways and find funding to help lift them out, right? And Hillary and I work together, I hear her heart, because we serve this population every single day. And so we're not in any way saying that we don't want to help this population, but there's, again, there's, there's got to be the right way to help them. And it's about giving a hand up, not a handout, right? I think when you give too many handouts, excuse me, you're not helping them in any way to become self-sufficient. I, I believe that there is a way that we can find together as a collective whole, as a community, to be able to help this population. So I did the Austin Study Mission, and I went in toward the tiny home village, and I thought it was wonderful. It was well put together. But the biggest thing in why it was so successful is because there was such a huge community support behind it, both monetarily and also labor as well, too. When I was there, there were hundreds and thousands of folks from the community that would just volunteer, come in to help build these tiny homes. It did not look like Tent City, it did not look anything like that. You had folks that lived in that area that was working day in and day out as well, too. It was trash-free, I mean, it looked wonderful, it wasn't, they even brought in trailers for Airbnb, and it's, and from what I was told, it was booked throughout the entire year. So there is a way to make it work, and I believe that it is a regional, regional solution, regional effort. I don't necessarily know if I agree that we shift it all into Sacramento County because I don't think, or to the city of Sacramento, because I don't know that that helps our homeless population that is here in our city, that we have to find a way to help them while they're here right now. So, you know, I support finding a home or finding some type of a solution to move forward. I don't know if, if we're talking about moving this board now, or are we talking about pulling this off a consent calendar? I'm kind of, I, as we were discussing, I wasn't sure if Councilmember Detrick is not supporting this, and I wasn't sure where the rest of us were at.
That was Sarah Claire, let's go ahead and pull it, and let's, I don't know, I'm, I'm ready to vote on this, so. We can handle eight point ten first.
Point of order, Mayor, so unless there's a desire to pull it off consent, that they think we would, we would.
I, I think there's clarity.
It needs to be pulled off because we don't have a unanimous.
You're going to have a structured vote, so you should pull it off because it's not going to be unanimous.
Second.
I'll move the remainder of the consent.
Okay, got, got a motion on the remainder of the consent, got a second?
Okay.
You, you want to make a.
Well, I just had a que, so was there, are there any comments for, for any other consent items?
You know, I, I, since we have Bobo here, I, I'd like to pull eight, eleven as well. So let's pull eight, ten, eight, eleven, and let's move the remainder of the consent.
I'll modify my motion.
Modify my second.
Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, all right. So let's handle eight point ten, are we ready? Yep. Okay, all in favor of eight point ten, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nope.
Abstention, all right. So eight point eleven. Bobo's here, right?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ken Schumacher, I'm counsel for Bobo Construction. Also with me is Austin Bobo, who is an officer. They are a fourth-generation contractor located here in Elk Grove. I don't know what questions folks have for me, I can just tell you that I think the staff recommendation is spot-on. Obviously, Bobo is the lowest responsive responsible bidder, and they're very excited to construct this project in their hometown.
Okay, thank you, Sarah, for coming tonight. The question I had, it came out, there was an incident related to a city business a little over five years ago, which you were required to disclose. But I, I'm interested in what actually transpired with the subcontractor.
In terms of a city project?
Yes.
Bobo did construct the special waste recycling center project and constructed it successfully, resolved all issues on that project. There was a dispute with the subcontractor who was actually claiming there were contaminated soils on the project. We had to deal with that through litigation, resolved it, which the city obviously, in the end, was not involved with the final resolution of that, since Bobo had resolved everything with the city. So it really was an issue with the subcontractor who raised concerns about what was disclosed or not disclosed, actually by the city on the project, Bobo addressed it as a general contractor.
So that's what prompted litigation against?
Yeah, prompted litigation, and, and in my mind, it has absolutely no relevance to this project, which is obviously judged on pure competitive bidding in terms of the evaluation of the bid that was presented by Bobo.
Okay, and you guys are a local company, aren't you?
They are, they're located in Elk Grove.
Tenth Street, right?
Tenth Street, exactly.
Vice Mayor?
Mr. Schumacher, thank you, and, and thank you for, for coming this evening. I just have a question, I was, I was forwarded an article about a decision from the Department of Industrial Relations, I believe it occurred back in two thousand thirteen, I'm guessing.
I, I think it was earlier than that.
Earlier than that, so it, and it talked about the, the, the judgment against you for, for a large amount. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to ask you about what you do, the processes and procedures you have in place to ensure that your subcontractors are performing and that they're, they're paying the wages that they agreed to pay.
Absolutely. That issue, and I just, I recall the article, had to do with a subcontractor, actually it's a union subcontractor, who failed to pay prevailing wage. On public works projects, all contractors have to provide certified payroll records. We're under penalty of perjury, they let the public owner know they are paying, paying prevailing wage. Bobo always pays prevailing wage. That issue happened to resolve, revolve around a subcontractor who falsified certified payroll records, not the fault of Bobo or the owner. Now unfortunately, under prevailing wage law, ultimately the subcontractor does not address prevailing wage, it falls on the lap of the general contractor. And that's what happened here, Bobo had to address it again, and they did. And it wasn't a judgment, it was a resolution, it was a settlement. So it wasn't anything that Bobo did, and they obtained all the records that they were required to, made sure they were all presented, otherwise they wouldn't have been paid by the public owner. Because public owners can withhold money if you do not provide certified payrolls. So Bobo will, under this project, follow all the prevailing wage laws, make sure all certified payrolls are, reports are provided as required, and will work with the city of Elk Grove to ensure that proper wage is paid.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
No? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Shall we vote, or shall we wait until Member Nguyen gets back?
I think we'll probably get enough to vote.
All right.
I'll move the item.
Okay, got a motion, got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, abstention, opposed, all right. Let's move on.
Just make a note for Section Nine for our public hearings, both Item nine point one and Item nine point two were continued to a date uncertain, those will be re-noticed when they do come back, and new publications will go out for that. That'll take us on to Section Ten, our regular agenda, action items and recommendations. Start with, pardon me, Item ten point one, which consider resolution, authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into a purchase contract for the acquisition of one or more single-family homes for use in homeless programming.
Hello again, I'm Sarah Bontrager, your Housing and Public Services Manager. I'll run through this fairly quickly. So as you know, we received the five million dollars from the state. Back in November, we allocated a million of that to acquire two properties for use as navigation hubs, one of which was just approved. And our fiscal year seventeen eighteen budget also allocated one million dollars for permanent shared housing purchases. That was split between the Community Development Block Grant and the Affordable Housing Fund. Our goal was to ultimately acquire a total of four single-family properties. One navigation hub for singles, one for families, again, that one will move forward, and one, and two properties for permanent shared housing. So the challenge that we're facing, as I'm sure you're aware, is that we are in a seller's market right now. Homes are selling very quickly, and the city's criteria and goals, including our efforts to locate housing throughout the city, are pretty specific. And so we're not just interested in any home, we, we need some, we need a home that will really work for the population to be served. So there is some difficulty in making offers in a timely manner. And so our proposed solution was to allow the city manager to make offers on up to four properties with a five hundred thousand dollar maximum per property, two million overall. This will now drop to one point five million dollars overall. It was a little complex, given we had the other item to be considered and didn't know how that would go. The offers would include an escrow period sufficient to do public outreach, and we can talk more about what that might mean going forward. Do the environmental review on the property, do a property inspection, get all the due diligence reports. And then, of course, still be brought forward to the open session of the city council to consider the purchase before it was finalized. So essentially, the step that we would be removing is the need to take the property to closed session before making an offer on it. So that is our proposed solution, so that we could carry on with our homeless programs. I know we're, we're going to be scheduling the workshop to talk more about strategy in general. This was a strategy that, that we had previously planned and budgeted. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Excellent, any questions? No questions, all right. I'll open it to public comment, seeing that there are no members of the public signed up to speak. Want to close public comment? Come on up, turn on your blue form. Do not see your name, ma'am, but come on up.
Okay, so I guess like the police contract, I didn't really read this correctly, but what I read it to mean was that we're going to give our city manager the opportunity to purchase homes without council approval. So maybe I read it wrong, but my concern there is not to compare Ms. Gill with a previous city manager, but we had a previous city manager that had access to our city of Elk Grove checkbook and wrote himself a little check. And I just don't think that this is the approach that we want to have when we're going to be using taxpayer money to purchase properties for the homeless. I, in the discussion earlier, I heard that now we want to work with our entire Sacramento County region. Well, I remember earlier in the year or the end of last year, the county did approach our city about combining some funds, and at that time, this council chose not to work regionally. So I think that we should move ahead and work in the, in the way that we're going to. My other concern is that we're changing, we're going to get a couple of properties, and they're going to be renting rooms, and that we're going to have sufficient rent to cover all of the costs, and that the cost from the city would be just on the purchase of the home, and that then we would also be turning over to the nonprofits, the management, and everything else. Well, what we've heard tonight is that the nonprofit is five years old, so it's a reasonably new nonprofit, and should things change within our community, that nonprofit might not be able to have enough money to satisfactorily run the homes. So what would, what's, would happen then? I mean, would we as a city be picking up the tab? Is there contingency plans if there's fallout from the nonprofit? If the nonprofit disappears, or it runs into financial problems? Long-term, what will this picture look like? So I ask you to consider some of these when we're talking about this item here, and I ask you to vote no on it. I do not want to give our city manager that particular power because once again, I think we need to be acting transparently as a government, even if it might influence what homes we buy within our community. And I want to make one comment about the home that you've purchased. It isn't as close to access of public transportation, schools, and shopping as was presented. The ones in Old Town are much more walkable, and it's easier to get to the stores over there and biking. So my concern about our families that are going to live there, if they don't have working automobiles, it will be difficult for them, thank you.
There are no additional speakers signed up to speak, want to close public comment? You know, I wanted, Mr. Hobbs, can you address that, checks and balances? Oh, one.
That's, okay, go ahead.
Checks and balances that are in place, that would.
Let me, let me just kind of explain what, what this item is proposed to do. What this would do is it would allow the city manager to enter into purchase and sale contracts for homes. The idea being is sometimes the city staff needs to move quickly in between council meetings. But the final close would come back to council for final approval before the, the close happens, similar to what happened tonight. And if you want to give direction on what type of time period or transparency issues or notice, you can certainly. or notice, you can certainly give that, we'd love to have that direction. But it would come back to council to confirm the, the close. So the council at that time, if it so chooses, could decline to go forward with the purchase.
Okay. Excellent. Member Hume?
Thank you. So I just want to clarify for you, Lynn, the city's partnership with the nonprofit is five years old? Sacramento Self-Help Housing has been around, I think...
The other nonprofits, the other self-help out, it's not just...
Hart. Hart's five years old. Oh, Hart, right, 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 right. But who we have running the house is Sacramento Self-Help Housing. I'm going to vote against this item for a couple of reasons. One, I think, is what's shown tonight, this process, and I, and I understand about the seller's market and to be nimble in a real estate transaction, but as we saw tonight, this process needs obviously more checks and balances, not fewer. A, and B, all of us up here, every so often, stand for election. I am not going to put on your shoulders, or any city manager's shoulders, to have wherever neighborhood a house is purchased focused only on a single individual. So I, I, I mean, I don't have any mistrust or anything like that, it's just, it's, this is a burden that should be shouldered by those who can be removed from office, or stood for reelection.
Yeah.
It's a good comment. And, oh, I'm sorry, and, and one more thing. At the very minimum, I would ask that we postpone this till after we have a workshop, because doggone it, I still want those tiny homes on the table. And this, to me, usurps that whole thing.
Councilman Detrick?
Well, I think that's pretty clear. I'm not a fan of the tiny homes, but that's, that's just my opinion. I'm going to vote no on this, for the same reason I voted no on the last item relative to purchase, because I think we should use this money and couple it up and do something I know you're talking about getting a few people off the street. I, I understand that, but I think we could get more bang for our buck in the long run, coupling it up, using, using this towards a regional effort. And if you took some, an existing facility, like the, the Boy Center, that is already kind of designed for housing and has kitchen, there's a lot of that, if we could make that coordination, that I think it could be done more rapidly, if everybody is willing. The problem is, is where there's, if there's no will with our, with our partners in the area.
I would like to, thank you, I would like to, as opposed to just saying, I mean, I know it's a, it's a 10.1 item, but as opposed to just saying no, I'd like to go ahead and at least postpone it, at least, and, and let's do the outreach, let's explain this overall strategy, let's consider Councilman Detrick's proposal, and I, I am intrigued by that, Councilman Detrick, I just don't have confidence that the timing and the, and the funding would be available in a, in a, in a time that we could actually, you know, make an immediate or more immediate, near-term impact.
I think Sacramento, would Sacramento get 50 million? I mean, I, I think...
No, San Francisco only got 10.
Yeah, San Francisco got 10.
Yeah, there were only three, there were only, there were only three entities that, that received funding, and we were one of them.
Yeah.
And, yeah, with San Francisco was the one with 10, and I don't remember who the other one was.
I thought there was some...
Modesto and Stanislas County each got 2.5 million.
Wasn't there some grant in Sacramento?
I think what you're thinking of is the whole person care, which Sacramento has billed as they received $64 million. I believe half of that is their own contribution to it, and the other half of it is a grant. They are open to talking with us, as they are with the county, about how that could benefit countywide, and so we will be engaging in that discussion with them to see how those funds might be able to benefit our residents.
I mean, if, if they work as hard at that as they did get in the arena, they should be able to get this done.
That, the, the money, that money is set aside for a specific purpose, which is healthcare-related. So there, there's many different funding pots out there, yeah. But, I mean, we continue to collaborate regionally where opportunities exist, and look for new opportunities where they don't.
Yeah. So my only point is that before we abandon this strategy, I would like, I'm, I'm okay with us revisiting, because I think we could do a better job of public outreach and try to take in the public's input, perhaps they may have some ideas. But I, I think, I don't want to abandon a strategy that I know Sarah and staff and a lot of us have seen for, you know, a good period of time, so.
Well, you got a no from me, and you got a no from Councilman Hume.
Well, I guess, I guess it's semantics. All I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, when you say no, are we just, this is totally off the table, or can, or is it, or is it, you know, is it more prudent to bring it, to bring it back, to bring it back after outreach, public outreach?
Off the table for me, I don't know about Councilman Hume.
Okay. Member Wyman?
So I, I agree with Councilmember Hume in that after we just went through tonight, we can't fast-track things like this. I mean, I, I think there needs to be some community input, and that we need to work with them a little bit more in getting their buy-in when we do things such as this. You know, Sacramento has way more homeless than we do, right? There's not, we could do so much more with what we have here to help our homeless population. I agree with the whole regional collaboration, but I, but I think shifting all the money to Sacramento is not necessarily going to help our homeless population that we, that we have here. I'm not sure that, I guess, for me, right now, no, I would vote no on this here, but I wouldn't say that we can't reconsider it later on down the line, when we have community meetings where they've worked with us on deciding a path for this, and that maybe by then, we can fast-track things, because things do come up, and, and they can't wait to the next council meeting. And so I, I think I'm with Council, Vice Mayor Sue, and that maybe put this on hold until later, once we've had some community meetings. I mean, I'm a no now, but I don't see why this can't come back.
Okay. So Sarah, a quick question. This may mean we may lose this particular property?
No, the Moon Creek property was, was approved. We'll keep moving forward with that property. We will just defer our, unless we find a great property, and we want to bring it back to you in closed session and have you all agree to pursue it, we will just defer any quick action, further than that.
I, I would rather have this go away, and we could always have a special meeting if there was something that was that needed to, if, if it was in between council meetings.
I think, I think it is real important to make sure that there is an adept outreach to the community. We've seen it, you know, many times before, and the truth of it is that for us on the day is, we're the ones who pay the price. And, you know, that being the case, I, I think it makes sense for us to do a little bit better job of outreach, and maybe expanding the 300 feet, a little bit further, you know. You give the gist as to where we're coming from, so. Okay? Ready to call a question? Yep? Okay. Let me see, motion?
I'll move to deny staff's recommendation.
Second.
You got, you got a motion denied, it's got a second. All, all in favor of that motion to deny staff's recommendation? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose? Objection? All right, next item.
Take us on to item 10.2, which is receive a presentation on the 2017 National Citizen Survey results.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Kara Reddick, Deputy City Manager. I have a very short presentation for you tonight about the 2017 National Citizen Survey results. So the city conducts this survey every other year since 2009, so this is our fifth survey. The results are used to determine community needs, spending priorities, measure progress, and improve service delivery. There were 2,700 mails, surveys that were mailed out, the city received a 19% response rate, we also had a similar survey on the city's website. The survey is a standard national survey with some custom questions that we incorporated. The highlights from the survey is residents identified safety and economy as priorities for the next two years. In the area of mobility, street cleaning and traffic signal timing favorability increased. What decreased in mobility was the ease of travel in the city and the ease of travel by bicycle within the city. Civic engagement increased of respondents, they were likely engaged and contacted Elk Grove elected officials. And regarding the way that respondents receive information, the top four categories are the city newsletter, the city website, KCRA III, and the Elk Grove Citizen. So I have one slide here on some of the highlights continued. 83% rated the city as an excellent or a good place to live. 88% feel very safe or somewhat safe in their neighborhood during the day. 64% of respondents express an overall feeling of safety in Elk Grove. 84% of respondents would recommend living in Elk Grove to others, and 85% plan to remain in the city for the next five years. So in conclusion, there are about eight reports, they're all available on the city's website, and they're broken up by different cross tabs regarding geography and demographics. So if anybody really wants to dive into the numbers, they can go to the city's website. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Kara. Are there any questions? There are no questions? All right, thank you. Want to open public comments? See, no members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close public comment? Counselor Delgaire, send direction. Receive and file. Done. Next item, please.
Take us on to item 10.3, which is receive the 2017-18 mid-year budget review and consider resolution amending the fiscal year 2017 budget performance measure program, fiscal years 2017 to 2022 capital improvement program and position classification plan.
Greetings, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Sue, and fellow City Council members. My name is Shayna Ryan, your Budget Manager for the city, and I'm here today to give a brief discussion on the fiscal year 2018 mid-year budget and performance review. Quick overview of the agenda, just going to go over a couple of progress reports at mid-year for General Fund and Development Services Fund, then we'll look at a proposed position control changes, and then a quick overview of operations and maintenance amendments, capital improvement program amendments, and then we'll conclude with a, a brief discussion of performance measure changes. First looking at the progress report on General Fund revenues. So generally speaking, General Fund revenues are performing above projections originally at the start of the fiscal year, and we're looking at about 2.3 million above the original budget at year-end as of today. The largest contributors to the high performance is sales tax, first and foremost, looking at 2.8% above the budget at year-end as of now, due to strong economy, retail, dining, and auto sales continuing to trend positively. Also, property transfer tax is way above projections as well, due to growth in home prices over the last year, and a strong home sales market as well. In particular, a new revenue source for General Fund integrated waste franchise fee. So originally, we projected 825,000 of that to be appropriate to the community center for the current year. Since these revenues are also performing above expectations at mid-year, staff is requesting a budget amendment to transfer additional authority toward the General Fund Capital Reserve. The additional revenue amount is currently estimated at approximately 472,000 as of, as of today, and so this would total 1.3 million for the year in that revenue source for General Fund. And then this next slide basically is an overview and summary of General Fund revenues to date. You can see at the bottom right-hand corner, the 3.43% variance at year-end is what we're projecting right now, which results in about $2.3 million in additional revenue then projected. Any questions on the revenue side of General Fund?
Questions?
Yes?
No questions.
Oh, no questions. Wonderful. Moving on to General Fund expenditures, so we've expended approximately 46.4% of the current year budget. We're projected to save approximately 2.6 million expenditures by year-end, given current trends. We're recommending tonight that 1.1 million of the projected savings be put toward the following, first and foremost, $900,000 be toward an additional purse unfunded liability payment. We already budgeted and paid 1.2 million current year already toward unfunded liabilities. However, another payment would help toward future year payments being constrained, and the city will also benefit from reduced interest expenditures in the future. And then another 125K toward the two new positions I'll discuss in the position control section for General Fund. And then about 29,000 toward upfitting three vehicles purchased last year, and 32,000 for the Traffic Division and PD to take home motorcycles between their shifts. And then again, I just have a summary table at the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see the 2.6 million numbers, the projected surplus in expenditure savings at year-end, given our current spending trends. Any questions on expenditures on General Fund side?
One question. Vice Mayor?
Just, just to comment, Shay, good choice in paying down our pension fund liabilities, so with all the conversations going on about pensions, it's good that we're taking care of that. Thank you.
Cool, thank you. Development Services Fund, so last fiscal year, we experienced a low generally in development activity, so we started off projecting a deficit in this fund of almost $300,000. However, due to growth in recent development activity in the last several months, especially in the Laguna Ridge area, we're now projecting a surplus at year-end in this fund of nearly $500,000. These projections reflect, in this table above, reflect a $1.3 million additional spending authority, specifically in the Engineering Division, where we're seeing a lot of the revenue projection increase. So this 1.3 million will be more than financed by the additional 1.8 million that we're projecting in additional revenue at year-end in this fund. Any questions on Development Services performance?
No questions.
Okay. On to Position Control. So we're proposing four new positions at mid-year that are in this table, and then the last item is actually a reclassification of a position, and the FY18 cost basically looks at the projected cost for any effect to this fiscal year, and then the future annual cost is looking at a full-year cost of, of those changes that are in the table. So the next slide actually goes into discussing the need for the new position, so in the City Attorney, the case is to maintain current service levels and to prepare for future needs. For the Animal Services Manager, bringing that position onboard currently will allow the individual to participate in decision-making for shelter development, operations, and hiring the subordinate and professional staff over the next year in anticipation of opening the shelter. The Senior Systems Tech Analyst is a new position that would provide much-needed enterprise software support, as well as implementation of new applications as a result of growing service needs citywide. The Admin Analyst, one, also known as a Housing Analyst essentially, a new position would support the substantial increase in workload of the Housing Division, since the Housing and Public Services Manager position was filled in 2011, so that's what that position is. The Senior Planner, being reclassified from an Associate Planner, that position reclass allows the Planning Division to address current and future entitlement processing needs in the most effective way. So that is the summary of all of our asks for Position Control. Any questions on those?
No questions.
Perfect. Just brief on O&M, Operations and Maintenance and Public Works is requesting $928,000, mainly due to the following factors, so this is kind of across several funds. Unexpected traffic signal and streetlight knockdowns in recent months, increased demand for utility markings related to streetlights, traffic, and drainage, higher water usage recently due to returning to a more regular watering schedule for the city with water restrictions being lifted. And also, we recently, effective December 1st, signed a new contract with the CSD on a new landscape contract, looking at 40% increase in costs due to the new vendor. And that's it for O&M. Otherwise, I can move on to major highlights from the CIP request. We have 10 total in the staff report in front of you, but these are sort of four of the major highlights. So it's a City Facilities Assessment and Master Plan, 400,000 for a study to assess and analyze the city's existing and future spatial needs for all city buildings that we currently have. Also, for the Aquatic Center Commons Site, coming soon, we're asking for an additional half a million dollars for FFE, fixtures, furnishing, and equipment, such as cameras, Wi-Fi equipment, office furniture, outdoor furniture, and umbrellas. And then I combined three projects here, and one item is basically SEPA Southeast Policy Area Sheds Sea Channel Improvements, 366K net request for improvements in right-of-way. And then also a new project, which is 490,000 to start for the final design and construction around Truman Street in Old Town area. And those are the major highlights from the 10 requests. Any questions on our CIP?
I've got a question.
Yes?
$400,000 seems really extravagant to figure out spatial needs of our existing facilities.
So I'm going to go ahead and defer to our Assistant City Manager, Jason Bearman, who is a subject matter expert in that request.
Nice punt.
Good evening, I'm happy to answer the, the question. We are running out of space in several of our facilities, including the Police Department, as well as over at the other side of the street with, with City Hall, and so it's really taking a look at what those needs are in the short term, midterm, and long term for the city. So it's a, it's a pretty extensive evaluation. You know, this is an estimate at this point, we don't have proposals yet, we're in the process of doing that, but based on the information we've gathered so far, we think this is sufficient to be able to do what we need to do. we think this is sufficient to be able to do what we need to do over the next year or so.
I sure hope so. Still seems like quite a bit of money for a spatial analysis.
Okay. No other questions?
Okay. And then our last item on this agenda is performance measures. So council adopted the FY18 citywide performance measures and targets in conjunction with the current year budget. Overall results at mid-year of the 72 citywide measures, 67% green, 10 yellow and 24% red. Just a reminder, yellow is that a division met their target within 10% and red is that they missed by more than 10%. This table just basically shows the overall analysis by council goal. The big council goals that achieve the highest performance at mid-year is the high operational performance goal and then also the diversifying the Elk Grove economy goal. Terms of requested amendments, the two major ones here are for the PD com center. Basically, the emergency 911 calls being answered, being changed to 15 seconds rather than 10, is having to do with being more compliant with the revised Office of Emergency Safety standards. And then also changing the non-emergency calls to a citywide measure rather than internal measure to give it more transparency. But those are the two major ones on this list. Any questions on suggested changes to performance targets?
Nope.
And then I turn it over to the five of you for our recommendation to adopt a resolution amending the budget performance measure program and CIP.
All right, thank you. It's time to open public comments, seeing no members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close public comment. Counsel deliberation and direction.
Move staff's recommendation.
Got a motion, got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, attention. Next item.
That'll take us on to item 10.4, which is to receive a presentation on SB 1383, short-lived climate pollutants and provide direction as appropriate.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. The item before you this evening is a presentation on SB 1383, which is a relatively new law that will require the city of Elk Grove to implement mandatory food waste recycling for both residents and businesses. This item is being presented to you this evening for two primary reasons. First off, it's the most significant piece of solid waste legislation since the California Integrated Waste Management Act of 1989. When you think about meeting our state mandated diversion goals or doing our annual state reporting, or when the state comes to do their annual inspection of us every year, all of those things are due to this legislation from 30 years ago. SB 1383 will be as significant as that. It will impact all community members, residents, businesses, government entities, even nonprofits to some extent, as you'll see later in my presentation. The impacts will include service changes and unfortunately likely cost increases as well. The second primary reason this is being presented this evening is that it will very heavily factor into the long-range strategic plan for solid waste and recycling services. To refresh your memory, back in December of 2016, we entered into a contract with HF&amp;H Consulting Services to do a 20-year lookout at our solid waste needs for the next 20 years in terms of programs, services and potentially facilities. Since this legislation has come into play, that report is very much centered around the basic things that we will now have to do to become into compliance with this legislation. You'll be hearing this report presented to you likely in April. So you'll be hearing a lot about this legislation when that plan is presented to you. So we want to make sure that you have some familiarity with this law and what it is prior to that report. So what is SB 1383? It actually covers quite a bit of short-lived climate pollutants, but I focused our discussion this evening just on the ones that impact the services here in Elk Grove, which is organic waste. It aims to limit the amount of organic waste going into landfills, setting a 50% reduction target from 2014 levels by 2020 and 75% reduction by 2025. It also sets a goal of recovering 20% of edible food for human consumption by 2025. The regulations are required to take effect by January 1st of 2022, which is less than four years away. So our programs must be in place by that date. It also authorizes local jurisdictions to pass a fee to recover the cost to comply with the regulations. And it authorizes CalRecycle, which is the state agency that oversees solid waste regulation, to adopt regulations to achieve these targets. CalRecycle has begun to draft those regulations. Their first draft was published in October of 2017. I've reviewed them and summarized them here for you. They are quite comprehensive. This is, again, the first draft and I would like to really emphasize that we do expect them to change. They are still in the process. They've accepted a lot of comments from jurisdictions, haulers, the public in general. So we do expect these to change. So I do want to emphasize that. But here is an overview of what they have so far. And I've summarized it into sort of four basic sections, which covers compliance requirements, education requirements, edible food recovery requirements and enforcement requirements. So the compliance requirements, jurisdictions are going to be required to provide organic waste service by 2022, January 1st of 2022. They're defining organic waste to include yard and garden waste, which is what we already collect in our green waste containers. It will now also include food scraps, soiled paper, so like dirty paper plates and napkins, textiles and carpet of an organic origin, so things made out of cotton and wool, not things like rayon and polyester, wood, lumber and fiber, manure, bio solids and digestate. These regulations will apply to all generators of organic waste. So pretty much anybody that eats food or wears clothes will be subject to these requirements. Jurisdictions must require all generators to comply regardless of the volume of organic waste generated. And they must be provided with a separate collection container that is separate from the trash container and separate from the other recyclables container. And that container must be serviced weekly at a minimum. We're thinking for Elk Grove, likely what we can do is repurpose our green waste route to convert it from solely green waste into an organics general waste. So all the food scraps and green waste would go into that container. So instead of adding a separate fourth container so that we would have trash, recyclables, green waste and organics, we would just have trash, recyclables and organics. So we would still continue to have three routes and then that green waste route would possibly then be converted to a weekly route instead of bi-weekly, which is what we have Jurisdictions, so all cities and counties, we would be responsible for reducing contamination within the organic waste stream by educating both our residents and our businesses about what can go in those bins. And we would also be responsible for screening contamination, whether we do it ourselves or through our franchise hauler. Moving on to the education requirements. We have to provide written notice to all of our generators every six months unless we can demonstrate that contamination within the waste stream is less than 10%, in which case we would only have to do it once per year. CalRecycle specifies what has to be included in those education materials, including how to properly recycle organics, the methane reduction benefits of recycling organics, and then the negative impacts that are associated with sending the organics to landfills. Edible food recovery requirements. So as a jurisdiction, we would be required to develop a list of food recovery services and organizations within the jurisdiction and develop a food donation guide. The edible food recovery requirements for the food recovery organization, so these are the folks that would be accepting the food donations, so nonprofits such as food banks and organizations who might redistribute the food to other organizations. They would be required to maintain records of the amount of food collected, what they did with that food and how much food they rejected. The food generators, the people who are creating the edible food that they can't use, those would include large venues. So this is likely going to impact some city projects such as the civic center, the aquatic center. We would be subject to these requirements. Large events, things like the salute to the red, white and blue, the CSD's Giant Pumpkin Festival, they would all be subject to these requirements. Certified farmers markets, commercial food generators, supermarkets, restaurants, hotels with a food facility, these would all be considered food generators. All these types of entities would be required to collect all excess edible food at the end of each day. And this would only be things that they don't intend to use and save for the next day. So things that they wouldn't otherwise intend to keep and sell for the next day. They have to keep records of each arrangement with each food recovery organization and they'd be required to educate employees about the requirement to recover edible food. Moving on to the fourth item, enforcement requirements. Jurisdictions will be required to adopt an ordinance imposing requirements to comply. So basically, we will have to pass an ordinance requiring both residents and businesses to comply with these new requirements. We also have to adopt an inspection and enforcement plan for all regulated entities. Regulated entities at this point have been defined as those food generator types, businesses, venues, events, things like that. They are not considering individual residents to be a regulated entity at this point. So we would not be doing enforcement on individual residents, but we would be doing them on businesses and entities. All new businesses would have to be inspected within one year of opening. And no fewer than 20% of our businesses and entities would have to be inspected each year. To give you some perspective, last fiscal year, we inspected about 370 businesses. 20% of our current businesses would be about 650, so we would have to roughly double our efforts in inspections to meet the requirements. And then if CalRecycle finds that any jurisdiction is not fulfilling one or more of its responsibilities, it can take over direct enforcement and seek administrative penalties. So given the draft regulations, staff has done some analysis to try to determine what that's going to do to residential rates. And I have three scenarios for you to look at. And again, this is all based on the draft rates or draft regulations. So as the draft regulations change, these estimates can change as well. Scenario one is based on some provisions within our existing franchise agreement that takes effect this July 1st with Republic Services. This is based on the provisions in there. It does not include the city implementation and ongoing enforcement and education costs. This is just the Republic costs. The other two are the draft costs from the HF&amp;H Long Range Strategic Plan that you'll be presented with next month, or excuse me, in April. So as you can see, it's a pretty significant cost impact. This is for 64-gallon service, which is currently about $26.28 a month. So this would be in addition to that current rate per month, per account. That's what about the rate that about 66% of our residents are now paying. If we assume that the actual amount is going to be somewhere in the average of this, which is about $5.39, and look at what that will be during the year of implementation, here's what that is going to look like when it actually takes effect. Per the franchise agreement, our rates increase about between 2% to 3% every year. So leading up to the year of implementation, our rates are increasing about 2.5% a year. And then when this program takes effect, that bump will be about a 22% impact in rates, which is pretty significant. And then thereafter, rates would continue on the normal, per the franchise agreement, between 2% and 3%. So that has a pretty, pretty significant impact to our rates. This slide shows the projected staffing needs that would be needed. Again, this is from the HF&amp;H Draft Long Range Strategic Plan for those ongoing needs to do the outreach, education, enforcement, inspection associated with the new programs for all three of the residential, the commercial and the food recovery elements of these requirements. The low end and the high end is between 1.23 and 2.25 FTEs. And then finally, just to conclude with some comments that have been submitted by staff and haulers. As I mentioned, this is going through the draft regulatory process. There's lots of opportunity for us to submit comments. And one of the goals this evening is that if council has any specific feedback for staff that you would like us to pass on to the state as we proceed into the formal rulemaking process, we would like to hear that. So I wanted to give you an overview of the comments that we've provided so far as well as comments that have been provided by the haulers and some of the other jurisdictions that we work with. First off, the regulations do not contain any good faith effort language. Currently, the AB 939 language says that CalRecycle, it allows CalRecycle to work with a jurisdiction. If they're not meeting their requirements, but they demonstrate that they're making a good faith effort to meet the requirements, it allows CalRecycle to work with that jurisdiction to not immediately impose penalties. Whereas this legislation would go straight to enforcement and penalties. So staff, as well as a number of jurisdictions and all of the haulers have commented to CalRecycle that this legislation should include that good faith effort language. In addition, we've commented on the cost impacts to residents and businesses, noting that CalRecycle should do a more comprehensive cost-benefit analysis to look not just at the environmental benefits of this type of regulation, but also the economic costs to not just residents, but businesses as well. We also have noted that there is limited capacity for organic waste recycling in our region. There is very few facilities available to take the organic waste. Currently, there is only a handful of facilities in the region and there's actually a number of them that are not currently operationable for a variety of reasons. In addition, statewide, there's a lack of available facilities. The haulers have noted that over the last 25 years, there have been about 180 anaerobic digesters facilities built. And in order to meet the requirements of this legislation, we would need double that number in the next five to seven years at a cost of over $3 billion. And if for some reason those facilities were to magically get built, all of the material that comes out of them, there's a lack of markets available to accept the volume of material that would be produced by those facilities. And then finally, the container labeling requirements that are included in the regulations are so prescriptive that probably most jurisdictions in California would have to either replace their containers or put temporary stickers at very high costs. Sacramento County has estimated that based on the current language of the regulations, they would have to replace their containers at a cost of over $17 million. So that concludes my presentation. Here is, as I mentioned, they're going to be entering into the formal rulemaking. There's going to be lots of opportunity to comment. So if council has any specific comments or feedback that you'd like us to pass on to the state, we would like to receive that direction, pass that on to them as we proceed through this process. We are following this legislation and rulemaking process very closely. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Questions? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Heather, for the presentation. Can you back up a slide, please? So, and I appreciate you and staff and haulers submitting comments so we can chime in on this. But I wanted to look at your comment about limited capacity for organic waste recycling in our region and lack of markets to accept the processed organics. Is there any subsequent requests to adjust the language in the bill from these that would, you know, I mean... you know, I mean, ideally, I'd like us to not have to do this. Obviously, we're producing more methane than the cows now, but I'm just wondering what would be our request in terms of adjusting the language based on this, on these two comments here? Maybe perhaps a delay in implementation or something like that?
I think the primary one is either sort of a phased approach to it, because, for example, right now, AB 1826, which is legislation that's currently in effect that requires certain businesses to recycle organic waste, is already in effect, and so there are already some businesses that have to do it. And because there are such a lack of facilities that are currently operational, the organic waste that's being collected right now is being landfilled in our region because the facilities are non-operational, and the ones that are can only take liquid waste, and other ones can't take anything with any visible liquid, and there just isn't sufficient ones available. And the state agencies who oversee the permitting process for these facilities have such prescriptive regulations that it takes so long to get one built. And so I think our feedback to the state is that there needs to be more coordination amongst the agencies to be able to more easily get these facilities operational more quickly so that we can meet those requirements, in addition to a phased approach so that we can meet the requirements and actually have someplace to take it in a more reasonable timeframe.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, you know, we don't have much choice in this, so, but if we're going to implement, we want to do it in a way that's, you know, I guess, the impact on our residents is the most gradual, and implementing something where we don't even have, you know, the infrastructure set up to accept or recycle, it's premature, so. Well, thank you. I'm hoping that folks will consider that, the rulemakers will consider these challenges going forward. Thank you.
Heather, is your counterparts at the League of City, have you worked with them to look at what everybody else is doing to kind of get all on the same page and be more powerful statewide?
Yeah. So when I say comments submitted by staff and haulers, so our franchise hauler, Republic Services, actually provided us with their letter of comment to CalRecycle. They co-signed on a letter that was from a number of agencies and a couple of other haulers and the League of California Cities. And so they have partnered with a number of other agencies, including League of California Cities, Sacramento County, some other haulers, so they've been involved as well.
Did we sign on to this one, or is this what you're proposing?
We did not sign on to that one. We separated, we proposed our own comments during the informal comment period, but we can certainly engage with them during the formal rulemaking.
Do our comments mirror theirs?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Do both. Sounds good.
Right. Any other questions? Nope. Thank you. Okay. Want to open a public comment, seeing no members of the public have signed up to speak. Want to close the public comment? Counsel deliberation and direction. Nothing additional to add? All right. Okay. Let's adjourn this meeting at 8:58 PM.